Good morning. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September the 14th, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. We have today with us, and it's a pleasure to have him, and we also have another good minister here with us today. And I know them both very well. They're both, not only are they good members of the clergy, but they're good citizens here of Hood County. And so, we have Father Stuart Smith of Good Shepherd Anglican Church that's going to give us the invocation this morning. And we also have Mike McMahon here that was going to serve as a backup because, as you all noticed, this is the first time since I've been in office that we don't have Dr. Bill Miller here. But he is in the hospital, or he would be here up here, but he's the one that arranges all of the ministers of all over Hood County to be here. And he's, we miss him and want everybody to be in his prayers. And I told Father Smith here, I said, be sure to remember Bill, our good brother, in his invocation this morning. So would you all please bow your head and welcome Father Stuart Smith?
Let us pray. Father, we give you thanks and praise for this beautiful new day, for every good and perfect gift that streams down from you, for our citizenship in this free nation, this free state of Texas, and for this wonderful county of Hood. We thank you for all the blessings you impart to us through representative government by which the people determine their own business through their representatives. And we're thankful for these commissioners and the judge, all that they do to serve the people of this county and to be accountable to you, Lord. We do ask your blessing upon Dr. Bill Miller, that you would raise him up, breathe fresh air into his lungs by your divine Holy Spirit, lift him up and returning to his custom duties. We thank you for him and for the witness he makes. And so now, Father, be with everyone who speaks today, both those who are empaneled and those who are guests, that everything we say, we say knowing you are listening in your mercy and in your righteousness. And this we ask through Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Now, will you join me in the predilection to our prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, proud of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, with the Texas flag, please.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Since today is the first regular Commissioners' Court meeting of the month, we have the open mic so that any citizen that fills out a public participation forms and hands it to the sheriff, and the sheriff will hand it to the county clerk, Miss Lang, and then they will mark them. You will have a maximum of five minutes to talk on any topic, but the whole agenda will just be for a maximum of 30 minutes. And I have two so far. Also, if any of the citizens wish to address any agenda item, and you've got plenty to choose from today, there's only 29, I think, on here, 27, a couple have got crossed off. Again, please fill out the public participation form, hand them to Sheriff Deeds, and Sheriff Deeds will hand them to Katie Lang. And again, there's a maximum of 30 minutes on any agenda item. And if there's more than six people, the time will have to be allocated between the people speaking for or against an agenda item. Which brings me to the point that please mark it clearly so that we can know whether you're for or against the agenda amendments or how to apportion the time. So, okay. With that having been said, let me go ahead and go now to the special presentations. This is the proclamation dealing with Constitution Week, which is from September the 17th to the 23rd. Ms. Harris, are you going to address this?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please come up here with your valuable assistance there?
Yes, thank you.
Which, by the way, there's no way that I could turn down Mrs. Harris because her husband is a bigwig in the Sons of the Republic, of which I'm a member. So if he would have called me up, I would, I mean, I'd have to capitulate on anything he said.
All right. Thank you.
Anyway, do you have a copy of it here?
I do not.
Would you like to read it?
Or you may, if you wish, whatever. I'd be happy to read it.
Okay. Well, maybe why don't you read it? That may sound better coming from you here. The, I've signed it, but the other commissioners have it. If you'll hand it back to me, I'll have it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So if you could just speak into the mic, I think that would be great. And would you state your name, ma'am, please?
Peggy Freeman.
You are also here with Ms. Harris, right?
Part of the DAR, yes, I am. And I'll be speaking, asking a request later in the program.
Okay, great. All right. Daughters of the American Revolution.
Yes, we are from the Elizabeth Crocker Chapter here in Granbury. And every year, we celebrate the Constitution from September the 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week and have a variety of activities. We're most thankful for this official proclamation from the county. And it reads as follows, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Ron Massengill, Judge of Hood County, along with all the members of the Hood County Commissioners' Court, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness thereof, and I will get all of your signatures, and we appreciate it so much, we keep these in our archives and hope to pass them on for many years to come." I would like to mention quickly, if I may, that we, the Daughters of the American Revolution at Elizabeth Crocker Chapter have some activities to celebrate Constitution Week. Today, we're going to set up a bulletin board in the Hood County Library and have free Constitution pamphlets for anyone who'd like to come by and get one, and information about membership in DAR, if you know of anybody who has any interest. And then also Peggy Freeman here, who has been the founder and coordinator of our Constitution Camp for Kids every summer, the third week in June. I've had the pleasure of participating with her in that a couple of times, and it is amazing. We have, it's a free camp for kids, Monday through Friday, half a day. We have hands-on activities with many adults coming as costumed, historical figures and art and games. And we always can use public speakers from our governmental agencies. We always love to have you. Yes. So, and we always need volunteers, don't have to be part of DAR, so please look us up. It's a lot of fun, little bit of work, but lots of fun. The kids have a good time. And lastly, we're going to have, hopefully, September 24th, a circle of liberty on the courthouse visible lawn area, which we're going to discuss with you later. Again, everyone, please come, set up sort of like Constitution Camp with costumed historical figures, and we'll hand out Constitution pamphlets. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. And we look for you all later on in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was very nice. Thank you. Okay. The next order, there are no service awards, correct, Ms. Welber? Okay.
We're going to need a motion on that, or can we just do it?
Does anybody, well, the proclamation, yeah, let's go ahead and do a formalized motion. I doubt if anybody was going to oppose this. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation as? Okay. All right. A motion was made by Commissioner Eagle to proclaim September the 17th to the 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Everybody, we will sign that and pass that down, and then we will hand it to you, Ms. Harris, and you can take it. Thank you very much for that. Very, very, very nice. Okay, so this is open mic. We have four people wishing to speak, so a maximum of five minutes each. Mr. Steve Biggers is first.
I will defer to Jackie Lopez being first. He can take my spot.
Mr. Miss Lopez. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, fine.
Good. All right. On February 5th, I sat before this court during a special meeting for line item transfers and blank check requests for the vaccine hub in Hood County, and spoke against the spending of taxpayer funds on administering vaccines to the public. At the end of my time, Mr. Massengill, sir, you stated, and I quote, "Nobody is forcing vaccination," that nobody is hurting at people and forcing you to get a vaccination, like we heard, "if you want to travel, have money, charge stuff." You get the point. Mr. Massengill, when you looked at me dead in the eyes while I was sitting in the audience and you said this, I knew this comment wouldn't age well. I knew a time was coming when you would have to confront the words you said and answer to them. In light of the recent executive order and plan released by President Biden regarding using OSHA to mandate employers with 100 or more employees to require vaccines or submit to a weekly test, I believe today is that day that I need to bring these comments back up to you. The things we all heard back in February are what we are seeing attempted to be enacted now, and this is a slippery slope of government overreach. Richard Henry Lee warned about slippery slopes. In fact, he said, "We are not only to guard against what men might, will do, but even against what they may do. Men in high public offices are in stations where they gradually lose sight of the people and do not often think of attending to them except when necessary to answer to private purposes." Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, and those at home who are watching or listening, I urge you all to take a stand as a community and county to say that we will not comply with unconstitutional mandates. We will not comply with this gross overreach of government, and we will not, we will do the job of government, which is this, to protect all rights of those who hear. I personally pledge to willfully and intentionally support all businesses who refuse to submit and comply. Thomas Jefferson said, "Where powers are assumed which have not been delegated, a nullification of the act is the rightful remedy." He is telling us that we have the right and power to nullify unconstitutional orders, edicts, and laws. John Taylor said, "The error of parchment liberty has made liberty the creature of parchment." Our rights do not come from paper and ink, but paper and ink only codified some of our rights, and the founders' new government had a long history of violating. We see this with the recreation and refinement of charters, agreements with tyrants and kings of the past. John Dickinson said, "Our liberties do not come from charters, for these are only the declaration of pre-existing rights." What is written in the Constitution are the defined limits on federal powers. All other duties, responsibilities, and powers rest in the states. And ladies and gentlemen, vaccine mandates are definitely not in that list of delegated powers delegated to the federal government. But you see, over the years and years, a federal government that has illegally taken powers from the states and decided that they are a round table of kings with one master themselves. The Ninth Amendment says, "The enumeration, the enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people," meaning all rights not listed in the Constitution belong to the people, not the government. In other words, the rights of the people are not limited to just rights in the Constitution. Thomas Jefferson said, "Every usurpation or law repugnant to the Constitution cannot have been made in pursuance of its powers; the latter will be nugatory and void." The Supreme Court ruled in Marbury versus Madison, "All laws which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void." And lastly, Alexander Hamilton said, "The laws of Congress are restricted to a certain sphere, and when they depart from the sphere, they are no longer supreme or binding. In the same manner, the states have certain independent power in which their laws are supreme, I will not, I presume, have escaped observation that it expressly confines a supremacy to laws made pursuant to the Constitution." We have the authority as individuals and as a community to stand up and say, "We will not comply." And I urge you commissioners and judges to find the righteous courage inside of you, a courage that only Christ can give, to stand for the liberties of those who elected you. A very wise woman said, "Every period of history that involves monumental change has always begun with one person taking a stand, and I want to know who is willing to take a stand." And I'll finish with this. I am officially and formally inviting you all to a special screening of Kristin Hall's new documentary, Noncompliant, in celebration of Constitution Day, September 17th, at 5:30 p.m. This is open to the public, everyone, regardless of party affiliation, as liberty is not partisan. I am especially urging those of you who are up for reelection to join us and stay for a meet and greet after the film and talk to your constituents. I'm pretty confident many challengers will be there as well, so bring your push cards and a game. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the chance to be here today. Winston Churchill once said, "I never worry about action, but only about inaction." And I want to say, many of us are very, very proud of the many actions that you have taken, all of you, including our ability to come here and speak, which is something that we had asked you to do, and we're very grateful for that. I think further action lies ahead, though, and we, we hope and pray that you will come together with each other and with other jurisdictions to collaborate, coordinate, and make those actions representative of we, the people. I'd like to say, I retired, as many of you know, six years ago from being the Executive Director of the Texas School Safety Center, a state agency and research institute. Not only were we tasked with oversight for school safety for every public school in Texas and junior colleges, but one of the projects under me, we had five homeland security priority actions for our agency, and I led the Governor's Institute for Criminal Justice Studies, where we trained law enforcement. One of the keynote speakers I hired was the Incident Commander at Columbine. He was the fire chief that day, and he talked about how the fire department at the front of the school was unable to communicate with the law enforcement at the back of the school for almost 45 minutes. Back then, and we've come a long way since then, not everywhere, they, they had different frequencies for their two-way radios. They absolutely were unable to communicate. He finally sent two of his, two of his men, who'd been in Vietnam, around back behind the school to see what was going on, and they came back wide-eyed, were under fire. He said, "We had three minutes to meet in that, in that trailer, the Incident Command post, develop trust, and establish a common strategy." Now, we're not in a crisis situation such as Columbine, of course, but we do face a wastewater crisis, is what everybody's calling it, and I wouldn't call it a crisis based on many of the others I've seen, but it is a crisis, that requires coming together collaboratively across jurisdictions and not waiting to establish trust and a common strategy. When Ross Perot met with a group of us starting our businesses years ago, we asked him, "What really happened that caused you to be booted off of the General Motors Board?" And he said, "Well, I'll tell you." He said, "They asked me what I thought, and I told them the truth. I said, 'You don't seem to like your product, you don't seem to like your customers, and you sure don't like each other.'" Well, what I'm asking you to do is get past some of the individual differences that we see that have caused some of you to have what appears to be conflict, as I'm saying, and, and work together with each other. Your superpower is that you are very different, different ideologies, different personalities, different points of view. But keep in mind, when you vote, you're not here to represent any of that. You're here to represent we, the people, with a mission and a vision that I, I hope we will be able to articulate. It may just be me, but I haven't heard an articulable vision or mission statement that represents your vision and your mission, and keeping in mind, it's our mission and vision, those of us that needs to be articulable. Everyone here, including me, and maybe it is just me, needs to be able to articulate, what are we doing here? Where are we headed? But that collaboration and coordination is extremely important, and of course, I'm a bit focused on wastewater these days, but it is important going forward to look at a long-range, 10, 20-year planning, where those who get credit for all the hard work you may hopefully be about to do, won't be y'all, probably, in 20 years or whenever it comes to fruition, but it's necessary to reach across the aisle and work with different jurisdictions. I'm not going to read all of it to you, but virtually every agency is, is highlighting the need across Texas and other areas to have collaborative wastewater solutions. It doesn't have to be regional, area-wide is the other term that's used quite a bit. But the Texas Water Code says that the Commission, Texas Water Quality Commission, shall encourage voluntary cooperation by the people, cities, industries, associations, agricultural interests, and representatives of other interests in preserving the greatest possible utility of water in the state. Number two, this is under Texas Water Code Title II, Subtitle D, Chapter 26, Subchapter B, "Encourage the formation and organization of cooperative groups, cities, associations, industries, and other water users for the purpose of providing a medium to discuss and formulate plans for the attainment of water control." And finally, "Establish policies and procedures for securing close cooperation," there's that word again, "among state agencies that have water quality control functions," and that includes counties. Water quality has no jurisdiction in Texas. It, water, surface water I'm talking about, it goes across, it's cross-jurisdictional. And the need for y'all to come together and collaborate, and I'm just going to say real quickly, our North Central Texas Council of Governments also promotes that, TCEQ promotes that, everyone promotes, cross-jurisdictional, no longer siloed, cooperative efforts. So again, just to close, Winston Churchill said, "I never worry about action, but only about inaction," and I'm a bit worried about inaction when it comes to this issue. But thank you so much again for all that you have done to collaborate and to work with us.
Thank you, Dr. Calder. Next speaker is Stacy Rist.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Stacy Rist. My husband and I own the property at 3101 Old Granbury Road, next door to the proposed East Sewer Plant that the city wants to build. We operate an RV park on that property. Bennett's RV Ranch opened Labor Day 2007. The park was forced annexed in 2019 into Granbury when the city enacted a highly controversial land grab. Jim and I also live in Mallard Point, less than one mile from the proposed sewer plant. We will be negatively affected by this plant 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. This morning, in my hands, I have the Executive Director's response to a hearing request and for reconsideration from, it was mailed by TCEQ and arrived over the weekend. Seventeen parties requested a contested case hearing. The Executive Director has recommended to the Commission that 15 of the 17 be granted a contested case hearing. To be granted a hearing, the requister must be an affected person who has a personal, justiciable interest related to legal right, duty, privilege, power, or economic interest affected by the application. An interest common to members of the general public does not qualify as a personal, justiciable interest. Those of us who have been recommended for a contested case have the potential to be the most negatively impacted and have met every deadline, dotted every i, and crossed every t. We are not random complainers. These 15 parties have brought before the TCEQ 18 separate issues that are legitimate, concerning enough, legitimate and concerning enough that the Executive Director has deemed them as referable to the State Office of Administrative Hearing. There are 12 more issues that may also be given the green light at a contested case hearing, should the Commission decide. This document and the Executive, this document and the Executive Director's response are very favorable to those of us who are opposed to the East Sewer Plant. We remain cautiously optimistic that we will be granted a contested case during the September 22nd public meeting and are prepared to move forward. It's fixing to get expensive for us and the city. If granted a hearing, the hearing will take 180 days from the preliminary hearing to the presentation of a proposal for decision to the Commission. But who knows when the preliminary hearing will even start and how long it will take the Commission to make a decision after the hearing. The reason that I brought all this up to the City Council, and am now repeating it here again to the Commissioners' Court, is to make sure you and the public in general are aware of this. I believe many people think that Victoria, Anita, and myself are three crazies who can't let this go, but we are not alone, and we aren't bothered by what people think of us. We are just the loud and consistent ones. We obviously have legitimate complaints to the planned sewer plant. The Executive Director of TCEQ agrees with us on this. I urge the City Council to reconsider the East Sewer Plant on Old Granbury Road and get busy with an alternative. I urge the Commissioners of Hood County to join them in an effort to fix this infrastructure crisis in a way less harmful to so many residents and businesses and less harmful to Lake Granbury. The lake is the heart of our county, and if it's diminished, so is Hood County's potential. And I see that there is an agenda item later in the meeting, and I wish I could stay for it, but thank you very much for discussing this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rist. That's all of the public information.
Because I wasn't giving up my spot. I just deferred to her for the first one.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I couldn't, I couldn't imagine a more better time to be able to address elected officials than Constitution Week. It's a, it's a good thing. We can exercise this, it really is. Those men were men of integrity that signed that Constitution, the Bill of Rights, 225, 240 years ago, and, and we should take heed for that. So since the last Commissioners' Court, I've had a chance to look at the budget talks and to look at where everything went last time around and how we talked about no new revenue, but yet we end up with $185,000, and then I hear 13%, and I hear 10%, and I hear increases. And there's a whole lot of fuzzy math coming from this department over here, and that's, that's a little disturbing for me with the millions and millions and millions of dollars that got handed to this county. And sometimes I feel like I'm on a game show where you get a new car, Environmental Department, and you get a new truck, Sheriff's Department, and you get new radios. It's like a gimme, gimme, gimme environment. And I just want you guys to be people of integrity, absolute integrity. I've had an opportunity over the last year to watch and observe, and I think I know, I think I know the end caps here are men of integrity. I think the two leaning this way, you might dress in red, but I think you're closet blue. And quite frankly, when you fight open-mic times and when you say, "Sue us, who cares?" You can't be a man of integrity and really, really, really want to represent these people and those people out there. Mr. Wilson, I know you're a man of faith. I know you've been labeled a hero and a lifesaver, and I truly, truly want to believe that you're a man of integrity. I hope that you're a Daniel. I hope you've been elected to this position, that you're a man of integrity, because going back to the well every time and every time, it's just $45 last year, it's just $75 this year. It has to stop. There are senior people that are not going to be able to live in their homes, because what was $125,000 is $250,000 now, and they can't pay the tax. And I know that for a fact, my mother-in-law. They tell me my $225,000 house is worth $400,000 now. That's crazy. It's a, it's a scam anyway. We all know how we feel about property taxes, but that's crazy, and it's causing people to lose their homes. Three and $400 a month they have to budget to be able to pay their taxes. So it has to stop. And I understand how the game is done. It's appraised here, you guys get to go down a couple pennies. I lowered taxes. No, you didn't. You worked hand in hand. My suggestion, they go up 5% at the appraisers, you go down 5% in your budget, period, because it's going to be the same money. It's going to be the same amount of money in. So that's going to make me run around back to my old topic, seems to be a sewer day, Victoria. It's on aerobic systems. $150 people pay for a contract. Let us do it. Let them do it. Put the $150 back in their pocket, and then there's no more, there's that tax break back. And it's going to happen, Jeannie. And it's going to happen, Jeannie. It's going to happen. And you push back on me on this. You've let me do it for three years. It's going to be bad. So it's going to happen. Training's going to happen. People are going to go. And I will testify, I will do whatever needs to be done to say, "I've had free rein. I've been a privileged citizen and the only privileged citizen doing this." You guys need to get in front of this. Give us a tax breakback. Give these people a tax breakback that want to do this. It's 150 bucks. Come on. I appreciate your time.
Okay, does that conclude the public agenda? Now, the next item is the consent agenda. Is there any Commissioner wish to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Judge, I need to talk about a couple things on the consent agenda. The first one is, reviewing the minutes in the last meeting of 27th of, 24th of August. There's an omission in those minutes. If you'll refer to the minutes on development, number two. In development, there was a, an item regarding a motion made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for September 28, 2021, for the replat of Brazos River Acres Lots 38R and 39R. And it was seconded by Commissioner Andrews. There is, in the minutes, there is no indication of what the vote was in the minutes. And I'd like to amend the minutes to show that it was five in favor of and zero against on that item.
Do I hear a motion that we amend the meetings? That was my recollection, that it was passed 5-0. I think that's what we have to do if we need to vote on it. I don't approve the minutes any longer. I don't have to. But I think we have to vote on that, that that was the recollection, that we voted to correct the minutes in that regard. So do I hear a motion? Are you making a motion, Mr. Cotton?
Yeah, I make the motion to make the correction to the minutes as stated.
That we go ahead and show the vote as being five in favor and zero against. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to make that correction to that particular item. Is there any other?
I got it, yeah, I do have another one. Do you want to speak on it? Becky, it's the Senate Consent Agenda on the, a couple of items on the budget transfers.
Yes, on line item transfers, on item number three, maintenance $483.64. B under three should say 483, not 486.
Okay.
That was corrected.
Has been corrected?
Yes.
I must have an old agenda. How about number eight, which is the district attorney for $896? And B should be expert testimony. I don't believe that one has been corrected. It should not be decreased outside court reporters. It should be decreased expert testimony. And those are the only, or that's the only change.
Do I hear a motion regarding that change?
I'll make that motion to make the change to expert testimony on item eight in the item transfers, budget transfers.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion again carries 5-0 to make that change. Is there anything else?
Those corrections, Judge, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I got one more question.
Okay.
On the consent agenda, it's D, sub, small b, dedicated line item transfers. Could you go through, Ms. Kidd, just kind of go, we're talking, we've got $5,986,715 as the increased revenue expense. Could you just go through those line items for us, please?
The first, item A, is the actual dollar amount we received. That's the revenue. This B, C, D, E, F, and G relate to paying to employees from that line, getting the correct dollar amounts in place for the budget. And then H was approved last court for, I believe that was something that Jeff, I can't remember the exact item. Do you remember, Glenn, the two things we bought out of Fund 83? We've all slept since then. That's been a long quarter ago, but that were, that did come to court. They did ask to pay for some items out of Fund 83. That's what this budget is for, and the remainder would be in capital outlay to be allocated however you gentlemen prefer.
So Fund 83 is the fund dedicated to the American Rescue Act money that we received, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that amount was $5,986,715, correct?
That's correct.
And these are just line item transfers that we're utilizing that money based on their guidelines to allocate to the different noted locations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Judge.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cotton that, other than the two corrections that we approved, 5-0, to make to the consent agenda and with the explanation from Ms. Kidd regarding the Fund 83 monies. Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Second approved by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That brings us down to business to be discussed and considered for approval. And we have Mr. Donald Lenny for road ops. Mr. Lenny, good to see you today, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Master. The list of roadways that we have here was completed in August 1st, 2019, Phase 2. What happened, actually started Phase 1 first, and skipped over to Phase 3 second back in 2006. And this is completing the Meander States development. The inspections were done, the inspections were done on July 28. They did come in in the middle of July, put the third course on each one of these roadways. Back in 2019, we did receive every density test that we asked for, and even performed some. They all, they all passed by our regulations. All these, on the inspection, Commissioner Eagle had been in on the emails, the list of things that we needed to repair before that was back in, all those were completed on September 3 of this year. With that being said, it's a total of 535,365 feet, which is about 85 feet more than a mile of roadway. Road operations recommend accepting the roadway home to the Meander State.
Questions or comments to Mr. Lenny? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the following roadways in the Meander States, Estates, Phase 2 subdivision into the county road system. Number one, Gallivant Drive, continuation of Gallivant Drive, Phase 3, to Meandering Way, 875 feet. Number two, Hock Road, continuation of Hock Road, Phase 1, to Promenade Drive, 135 feet. Meandering Court, from Meandering Way to the end of the pavement, 195 feet. Meandering Way, continuation of Meandering Way, Phase 3, to Meandering Way, Phase 1, 1,875 feet. Promenade Court, from Waring Way Drive to the cul-de-sac, 515 feet. Promenade Drive, continuation of Promenade Drive, Phase 3, to Waring Way Drive, 1,365 feet. And finally, Waring Way Drive, continuation of Waring Way Drive, Phase 3, to Promenade Drive, 405 feet.
Is there a second to Commissioner Eagle's motion?
Second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Okay, the next we have development. Mr. Clint Head.
Good morning, Judge. First item, developments, set in an application for a replat of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 2, lots 203R1-1, lots 203R1-2, and 203R1-3 in 363. Staff recommends setting a public hearing for this replat for the October 12, 2021, Commissioners' Court.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to set the public hearing for the Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 2, for October the 12, 2021?
We'll move.
Second? It made by Commissioner Wilson to set the hearing for the replat of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 2, lots 203R and 203R12, 20313. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Next item has a public hearing to discuss the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 494.
Okay, now we're going to convene into a public hearing at 20 minutes till 10:00 PM. So we're now in a public hearing.
This replat is a combined with Lot 494, Zero Point 390 acre tract, as part of the French Smith Saturday Act, number 518, and creating a 18.428 acre lot called 494. Property located in Water Quality District, 364, and is served by Aqua Texas Water, and is served on site sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of replat, Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 494, par as perceived.
Okay. Any questions or comments or discussion considering the replat on Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3? If not, we're going to reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion regarding the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion that we, the county, accept the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 494R, as presented by Mr. Head.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Andrews regarding the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 49R. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay.
Other public hearing to discuss and consider the site development plan for out in the country, R V Park.
Okay. We are now convening again into a public hearing. It is 17 minutes till 10:00. So we're now in a public hearing. What do you have for us, Ms. Dean?
Property located at 3100 Gil City Highway, over Texas. Will be on 5.31 acre tract. Out of the R Perry Saturday Act, tract number 437, 15 acres. Site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District and is served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Pro site development plan proposes to create eight recreational vehicle spaces. There's one variance associated with this site development plan concerning having a separate entrance exit. Due to the location on the Tex- dot roadway and the location adjacent to a Tex- dot drainage channel, and the Tex- dot drainage channel is, and the inundation of that channel, there are several of these spots proposed with a layout and a proposed drive of the interior as part of staff has no objection to this hearing. All the comments have been addressed, and if the statute to grant this variance, staff recommends approval of the site and other plan, and the onsite sewage facility permanent as perceived.
Okay. Any further discussions or comments or questions to Mr. Head? If not, we're going to reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court, and it is now 16 minutes till 10:00. So do I hear a motion regarding the site development plan for out in the country RV Park?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the variance concerning the separate entrance and exit that's unique to this particular site development plan and to approve the development plan and onsite sewage facilities.
Second to Mr.?
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to grant the variance and to approve the site development plan for out in the country RV Park, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Last item I have is a preliminary plat of Lusk Gardens.
Okay.
This property is located at 4420 Fall Creek Highway, and it proposes to create 64 single-family lots with six HOA and drainage lots. The proposed preliminary plat is located in the Water Quality District and is served by A mud water and sewer. The preliminary plat proposes to construct approximately 2,830 feet of concrete curb and gutter street. The concept plan for this preliminary plat was conditionally approved at the May 11, 2021. Commissioners' Court continued upon text out approval, approving the access permit, and the offsite improvements for drainage must be constructed after the final plat is recorded and prior to any construction onsite of this development to ensure surface water during the construction phase is contained in these improvements. Text dot has approved the access permit. The construction plans are still under review by staff and the engineer. There are no variances associated with this preliminary plat. All comments for the preliminary plat have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Lusk Gardens as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Mr. Head?
Developer, are they, are they not signing up to put that drainage ditch in before they continue or not? Because that is a...
Once the construction plans are finished, then they can't...
It is in there?
Yeah, they can't start construction until after the final plat's approved.
That's right. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
We'll move.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the preliminary plat of Lusk Gardens. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear him. Second by Commissioner Eagle. So any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, financial. Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
For this court, you've been given advance information regarding invoices that total Of this amount, you've also been given a spreadsheet as it relates to payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding any invoices paid in this court?
Anybody have any questions or comment regarding the payment of the invoices?
No fuzzy math here, sir.
Okay.
Judge, I make a motion to approve the expenditures of $1,508,684.3.
Second? A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the payment of the invoices in the amount of $1,508,684.3, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. What else you have, Ms. Kidd?
Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action regarding a resolution committing fund balances in accordance with GASB 54 regulations and dedicating 7% to 10% of the general fund property tax collections to capital projects. We did this last year. It has helped keep our capital projects balance up, whereas we don't have to borrow money for patrol cars and other items that come up during the year. It reduces fund balance, keeping in line with some of the things Commissioner Eagle and I have talked about. And this is just another way of continuing that and keeping capital projects balances up for future expenditures. Solely at your discretion, you can do any number you would like. I believe you have the form, sir, and it can be, it's, that part is left blank, the percent. You can choose to do that today. I believe last year, we did wait till after the budget was passed, but however you want to do it. I didn't want to not, I didn't want to let this get slipped by.
Are you recommending, does it make it easier for your purposes of auditing the budget to do? budget to do, to approve this from seven to 10%?
It, it helps keep our fund balance down. You don't want excessive fund balance. I like to keep 40 to 50% fund balance. This keeps it between those markers, and I'm more comfortable with it there. I do not want to drop more than 40%, but we do need to keep our capital projects monies up for future expenditures. No one has any idea what's going to happen. The sheriff's going to need five more vehicles. This helps fund that and other items that come up during the year. So it is just a way that I don't have to borrow money, and we keep fund balance at a level that we're comfortable with.
Anybody have any questions or comments or discussion about this item?
I've got a comment. I just want to make sure I'm clear and we're on the same page. Uh, excuse me. We had a lengthy discussion on fund balance last year, and if, when I read the latest annual report, our fund back, balance actually went up $3 million. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
Uh, now, and what, did we vote on a 10% tide, so to speak, last year for this?
Yes, sir.
And what is our, what is our general fund property tax collection, that, that capital fund? What's the balance in that right now?
We collect over $20 million. I've put about a little over $2 million from that into Fund 55 Capital Projects.
And that's how much you put in from the last?
Well, that, last year's the first time we ever did that.
Okay. Um, okay, that's, that's all I got.
So gentlemen, it's up to you. Do you want to do 5, 7, or 10%? 10% is, has worked really well last year. Again, whatever you decide, and being as we do have additional monies, I would suggest 10%.
Okay.
Is that all right with you, Commissioner Eagle?
Well, I'm, and this is no, no, you know, all due respect, but I'm, we did 10% last year. We have gotten in, uh, six, seven, nearly $10 million between the CARES Act money —
Yes, sir.
— and the American Rescue Act money. I'm wondering, just to, as a litmus test this time, that we try 5% and then compare how it worked from the last year's 10%.
Again, whatever you decide to do.
So I would make a motion to dedicate 5% of the general fund property tax collections to capital projects.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to dedicate 5% of the general fund, uh, into, um, the, once the general fund balance.
From cap, from general fund to capital projects.
To capital projects. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero for 5% transfer from the general fund to capital projects.
And I'll tag that if it, we'll see how it goes this year, and then if we need to do a just next year, that's what we'll do.
I have no problem with any of it, sir.
Okay. What's your next item?
The review of the district clerk's financial records. Audit staff has completed a review of the district clerk's financial records. The only recommendation we have at this time is to have her review the amount in the Civil Criminal DRO checking account and see if any of it can be distributed to a different entity. That balance has been in there for quite some time, and we'd like to get some of it if it belongs to us, but we'll work with Tona on that. So, but other than that, there are no issues. Good audit. Please accept it as, as submitted.
Well, Tona told me she wanted to use that money to go to Europe or something. I'm just, I'm just, I said it because you, I just wanted to see if you were paying attention there, Tona. Okay. So, you recommend approving?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, with that, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the 2021 review of the district clerk's financial records.
Second.
Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Now, we're under miscellaneous, and the first agenda item is discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Elizabeth Crockett Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution to use the courthouse lawn and sidewalk for an event to celebrate Constitution Week on Friday, September the 24th, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Please, Ms. Freeman, welcome back.
Well, thank you, and I, I want to thank y'all for the amazing opportunity I've had this morning to watch liberty in action, to watch people come forth, and to be able to, uh, talk with you all. And, you know, I've heard from a constitutional lawyer that the, the people that are the most powerful people in our country are our county judge, county commissioners, and our county sheriff. And we argue and fight over presidents, and we rarely get to know the men who have the most power and women who have the most power over us. Thank y'all for being honorable and for being moral people. Appreciate that so much. So, this is just a request to, um, use the courthouse square lawn and sidewalk. On September the 24th, uh, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll set up from 4:30 to 5:00, and then our presentation will be from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. And we will have 12 stations, a couple of chairs at each station, and a flag attached only to the chairs, no, nothing into the grounds, and, uh, one table on the gazebo. The public's invited to walk around our circle of liberty and engage with our presenters, who range from King George to George Washington to, uh, Sons of Liberty, um, Women of the First Tea Party. I don't know if y'all know who she was, but she will be there, and others. We, we hope that, uh, our community will come and then participate with us in this, um, presentation, not only of our founders, but also of, each one will highlight one part of the Constitution. So this is to end the week of Constitution Week. If I have any questions?
Anybody have any question, Ms. Freeman? I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing, and your organization is doing. We're looking very much for it. Thank you for the kind words that you addressed to the Commissioners and myself and the sheriff. We appreciate that very much. And you're always welcome back the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. This isn't where we are.
Thank you.
Just like Ms. Fay Lantham there, she's always here.
Mm-hmm.
So, please come back and see, yeah. That's the first thing she does every Tuesday morning. So please come back. We're gonna make a motion right now.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion regarding the use of the courthouse lawn and sidewalk for the Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution?
So moved.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the Elizabeth Crockett Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to use the courthouse lawn and sidewalk for an event to celebrate the Constitution Week on Friday, September the 24th, 2021, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is unanimous, he's five zero. We'll see you then.
Okay, and the wonderful, um, certificate y'all gave us, the proclamation, do we need to stay and get that later, or can we get it now?
We've got it right here, and it's all signed, so.
Okay. Is there, is there, do you mind if we have a picture with?
Oh, come down.
With the whole court?
Yes.
Let's get the whole court.
We just like to brag about how good-looking our Commissioners are.
Come over on the right side of me here, and I'm on a hand.
Hand it to her, that way to her. She's our region.
Okay, well, we'll have three things. How about this?
Of course, King George is sitting right there.
Okay, you can get it?
Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Yes, this?
Can we take a photo of it with our camera?
Yes, and I will post it on our chapter Facebook page in Texas. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Don't tell you, you did a great job.
Thank you, thank you. You'll take care.
There's a reason for that. I don't.
Thank you. I know, push a button, that's what makes it come on. I'm technically inclined.
So inclined.
Hey.
Bye. Thank y'all very much for coming here. We're looking forward there. You gonna go look at the Constitution?
I'm gonna too.
Come get me. We'll go together. Okay. Okay, this brings us to item number two under miscellaneous. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application, approving the request for the courthouse parking lot in gazebo for the Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October the 9th, 2021, from 6:30 AM to 4:00 PM. We have that. Is there anybody here from the Corvette Club wish to speak on that behalf? I'm assuming that the event application has been approved, is it not? Mr. Mills, have you looked at it?
I haven't.
I'm assuming, is anybody? Yes. Is it in here? I think I saw it in here, and I've, um, I've seen it lighted. I've got it here.
Yeah.
And it's, I've got it, I'm looking at it right now. It's got the insurance.
They have, they have, they have insurance up to $5 million. Looks to me like everything's pretty much in order.
Yep. Yep. City of Granbury has approved it, so, and we got the insurance there, so, do I hear an appropriate motion from the Commissioners?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make that motion, uh, to have you sign the event application to approve the request, uh, for use of the courthouse parking lot and gazebo for the Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October 9th, 2021, from 6:30 AM to 4:00 PM. We have that. Is there anybody here from the Corvette Club wish to speak on that behalf?
I'm assuming that the event application has been approved, is it not? Mr. Mills, have you looked at it?
I haven't.
I'm assuming, is anybody? Yes. Is it in here? I think I saw it in here, and I've, um, I've seen it lighted. I've got it here.
Yeah.
And it's, I've got it, I'm looking at it right now. It's got the insurance.
They have, they have insurance up to $5 million. Looks to me like everything's pretty much in order.
Yep. Yep. City of Granbury has approved it, so, and we got the insurance there, so, do I hear an appropriate motion from the Commissioners?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make that motion, uh, to have you sign the event application to approve the request, uh, for use of the courthouse parking lot and gazebo for the Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October 9th, 2021, from 6:30 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second to Mr. Commissioner Eagle's motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next, discuss and take appropriate action to award contract RFB 2021-010 Inspection, Maintenance and Monitoring of Fire Prevention Equipment and Services. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Just to make a note that, uh, I think Glenn wanted to, but that's for Chris Ledoux is, is gonna be on that? Okay. All right.
Request for proposal 2021-10 Inspection, Maintenance and Monitoring of Fire Equipment was opened on September 2nd at 10:00 AM in the purchasing department. There was one qualified response to the RFP, and the grading criteria was evaluated, totaled, and averaged. The vendor with the highest score was Chris Ledoux. Therefore, purchasing and facility maintenance recommend the contract be awarded to Chris Ledoux.
Any further discussion? Do you agree with that back there, Mr. Jay Riley?
Yes, sir, I agree.
Okay. That's a good endorsement there. So do I hear a proper motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the, award the contract for RFB 2021-010 Inspection, Maintenance and Monitoring of Fire Protection, Fire Prevention Equipment and Services to Chris Ledoux.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Eagle regarding the fire inspection equipment as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, number four, discuss and take appropriate action to award contract RFQ 2021-009 Construction Management Service. What do you have in that regard, Ms. Tillman?
Yes, good morning. Request for qualifications 2021-9 Construction Management Services was opened on July 26th at 10:00 AM in the purchasing office. There were six qualified responses to the RFQ. They were evaluated by a panel of six who scored, totaled, and averaged, uh, the scores. The vendor with the highest score was AGCM. Therefore, staff recommends the contract be awarded to AGCM.
Okay. Any discussion or questions regarding that contract?
Judge, I'll, I'll make the motion to award contract RFQ 2021-009 Construction Management Services to AGCM.
Second. By Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Wilson with regard to recording the Construction Management Service. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Item number five, take appropriate action to hold a public hearing for the proposed tax rate of .420345 per $100 valuation. Ms. Kidd, I guess we need to adjourn into a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, at eight minutes after 10:00, we are adjourning into, or convening into a public hearing. Do you have a comment, Ms.?
No, sir.
I got a question, uh, just to help me out with, and for the folks in the audience. We've got, this is a public hearing on 5:00, but we're not gonna consider to adopt a rate until 8:00. You sandwich the budget in between these two. Could you explain why we're doing that?
You have to have a public hearing prior to voting for your tax rate and your budget. You can have the public hearing at the same meeting that you have the other votes. It's getting everything in the paper properly was, and this was, uh, actually, you have to do a certain number of days before you have this public hearing, so this was the best way to do this, because you don't, you can't hold a special meeting for this. You can't have this too soon. You obviously can't have it too late. Today is the best day for people to come and talk about it, and with everything else that's on here relating to the budget, I want them to have the opportunity to speak if they wanted to.
So this is an opportunity, a scheduled opportunity for the public to come in and comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any comment from anybody in the public wish to address this? If not, then I'm going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. And, do we need to take a vote on this at this time?
No, sir.
After that, just have the public hearing? Okay. So we've done the public hearing. We're moving on to item number six, consider the proposed increase in tax revenue of the proposed budget, and take a record vote regarding that increase per Local Government Code 111.008 Supremacy. Again, Ms. Kidd.
Judge Commissioners, this is the outline per government code. I actually think it's slightly backwards, but this is how it's outlined in government code. I'm sure, Mr. Eagle, you've read this and agree with me.
I do.
But I'm presenting it as it is given to me by local government code. Number seven, you will get more revenue. Every county in Texas will get more revenue regardless Judge Commissioners, this is the outline per government code. I actually think it's slightly backwards, but this is how it's outlined in government code. I'm sure, Mr. Eagle, you've read this and agree with me.
I do.
But I'm presenting it as it is given to me by local government code. Number seven, you will get more revenue. Every county in Texas will get more revenue regardless of if they are the known revenue rate, the voter approval rate. You will get more revenue. That's a fact. So this is something that you gentlemen should probably vote for because it's going to happen regardless. Right, Kevin?
Is there anybody that have any further questions or comments to the order to Ms. Becky Kidd? Commissioner Andrews, you've been out. Do you need to ask anything?
This, I think we know.
Where we going?
Know where I am on that deal, but...
Okay. Well, do I hear a motion regarding?
Sir, you, you need a record vote. You have to have them vote one at a time, sir.
Okay. Okay.
The motion, or we've got the motion?
The motion is to take a record vote regarding that increase per Local Government Code
Yes, sir.
So I call upon Commissioner Andrews.
It still seems a little bit backwards to me to, to... The increase in the tax rate and everything, it almost seems like the, the rate needs to be, but that's often discussed or whatever. And I'm, I'll say no.
I'm sorry, we have a citizen that wants to speak on this.
This is for number six. We have been...
We're on number six.
Oh, we are on number six. I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Zach Maxwell.
We got one no vote on the board.
Well, thank you. I apologize. Sorry for the confusion if there was any on there. My name's Zach Maxwell, and I come before you today frankly a little disappointed. With everything that our, our country and our community has gone through, I think the last thing that we need is a tax increase. I think that our citizens have gone through enough. We, as citizens, you as commissioners and a judge have gone out and have campaigned on fiscal responsibility. You have gone out and you have, you have pleaded with citizens to get their vote and you have asked them to give that to you in exchange for your integrity and for your ability to be able to function, function as a government that is fiscally responsible. I have done my due diligence in looking through the budget as much as I can, time permitted. I have spoken to department heads. I have spoken to commissioners. But you guys are elected officials who are paid a salary. Some of you do different things with your salary, but this is a job. And that salary is well above the median household income for this county. And now we are asking them for more money on top of what we are already receiving as a tax base. And so for that, I respectfully ask you, please, on behalf of my family, on, and behalf of all the other families that are out struggling right now, to start a business, to make better for their families, to buy a house. I'm a young, I have a young family. I am young, but I was not born yesterday. And this increase in taxes is wrong. And we need leadership. And I'm asking you very respectfully, please stand up for your citizens and do the right thing and do not increase taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Maxwell, I'd like to remind you that there are people who work for Hood County who also would like to build a home and get off food stamps, and that's what we're working to. We'd like them to get off food stamps to help the whole government. So I promise you, we don't, these gentlemen don't do any of this lightly. We've had a salary survey done. We are doing our very best for our employees. They are the backbone of this community. I'm nothing without mine. These gentlemen are nothing without the community, the taxpayers, and I appreciate your comments, but our people, they're just like you, sir, and they deserve every good thing that we can give them so that we can keep our good employees. And I thank you for your comments.
Do you mind if I address that real quick? I will not take long, but I feel as though it's appropriate. Because I think, because I think that the, that what I said, I was not addressing the fact that, that, I mean no disrespect to the employees that work for this community, and I am in favor of making sure that we adequately pay our people what they are due. What I'm saying is, is that I think using them as an excuse to raise taxes, I think is inappropriate because there are, there are functionalities within our government where we can cut and we can save. Thank you.
We have one nay vote.
Okay, one nay vote. Okay, back to the agenda now. You vote as stated here, consider the proposed increase in tax revenue of the proposed budget and a record vote regarding the increase for the Local Government Code.
Yes.
Judge, one no, and Commissioner Cotton votes yes. Commissioner Wilson, how do you?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson votes yes. Commissioner Eagle?
I have to say no.
Commissioner Eagle votes no. County Judge Massie, your votes, yes.
Item number seven. Consider proposed budget. That was the subject of a public hearing on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, and August 24th, 2021, for the Hood County Fiscal Year 2022, including any changes as agreed, and take a record vote regarding that budget.
I need, I need to bring up something here, being out of pocket for the last couple of weeks. We have been kind of working on a, creating an additional, a deputy patrol, if you were, with Toler and Crescent, and I didn't know what we needed to do because...
We need to do it now, sir.
We can't create a position in the middle of the year, so if that's something that these, these entities are going to be able to fund...
Okay, let me help you out, Kevin.
Please do.
We have Fund 101 and Fund 106. Those have been utilized in the past for SRO officers. We have no activity in those funds. One of them can be utilized with that budget. We will have a revenue line account in there for the revenue that would come in from Crescent and Toler, and we'll have expenditure lines for an officer with the starting pay of the basic patrol deputy. And if you, we can add this to this, and that, that, I can make that happen. That's all we have to do is with the current budget that you have that's been given to you, plus this addition, you can pass this budget.
Okay, yeah.
One for each community, one for Toler, one for...
No, one officer.
Additional.
One, one additional patrol officer being dedicated in, in a separate fund so that it's easy to manage that money. We've done that before.
The cities are, are paying the county for, but we just need to be able to make sure that we've got that.
And he's right, because you need to set that now. You cannot change, you cannot add a position during the year. Therefore, I prefer that you do that right now, and I'm glad, Kevin, you remember.
Yeah, that's...
Thank you, sir.
But we're not approving that now. We're just putting it in the budget.
You're approving the budget.
Well, we don't have that in our local agreement, do we? For these officers? That's what you're saying.
They're working on that, but you can please approve this so that if it happens, it's there. It can...
That's fine.
Yes, sir. Please approve this because they are working on that.
Right, yeah, I think this is contingent on the funding from those entities to, to be able to pay those salaries, so I just wanted to make sure everything was in order before that to facilitate that when it happens.
We want to approve the budget.
With the addition of one patrol deputy in a dedicated fund, supported by revenue from Toler and Lepin.
Well, but what if we don't get the revenue? Wait a minute.
Crescent, sorry.
We haven't got that revenue. We haven't got that agreement yet, have we?
Kevin is working on that. We have one of them, correct?
Yeah, we do.
We have one.
Crescent, we don't have Toler.
Well, that's why this is if, then, one of those if, then cases.
All right.
Why, we need it there.
So we're setting the money aside, and then if we, if we come into an agreement with Toler, we'll have the money to...
Yes, sir.
To support it. Okay.
And if it falls apart, you're, you're not out anything.
All right. Okay with that.
And again, this is a record vote, gentlemen.
Okay. Approving the budget for which will include one patrol officer for Toler and Crescent out of the SRO budget.
Yes, sir. We can use that fund.
If we, if they pay, if Toler and Crescent pays their proportionate share. Okay. Record vote. Commissioner Andrews, how do you vote?
I have, excuse me, Judge. I got another com, I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. And this is being done with a smile on my face. Try to. I want to do a recap of the last year, just a brief one. Last year, or actually this, the past few months, we bought a command vehicle, some call an RV, this year and paid $200,000, spent some more money after that. I voted no on that. That could have gone to VFD's volunteer fire departments, and it could have gone to employee raises. We bought voting equipment we didn't need this year. Paid over $600,000 and it's, and it's still counting, by the way. There's other incidental fees coming in, rolling in on that. I voted no on that. Could have gone to volunteer fire departments, and it could have gone to employee raises. We bought operational software, Tyler versus Net Data, that we really didn't need right now, and half the county didn't want. Paid over $1.2 million and counting. I voted no on that. That could have gone to volunteer fire departments, and that could have gone to employee raises. All in all, I have just stated to you, just starting, about $2 million worth of stuff we really need right now, which if you interpolate that into what the tax rate is, it, it figures up to be about six cents tax rate to cover that $2 million, which could have gone to volunteer fire departments and/or employee raises. We have received nearly $3 million in CAREZAC money in the last two, year and a half since, since the federal government started paying us off to stay shut down. And then we've recently, in, in the last couple of months, we received $5.9 million, just put in an account by the federal government, it's just a digital entry, which a budget, somewhat of a budget got passed last time that I disagreed with. And now we're getting ready to vote on, vote on a budget that I think is too much. It's too high. We need to figure out how to tighten our belts. There's, there's extra employees in there. Of course, I understand what, what we just did for the sheriff. Those are essential services that we do need, the sheriff's department, and whatever employees he needs to take care of protecting the county. I just wanted to point this out because we have a, in my opinion, and this is just me, I'm just one opinion up here. We have a spending problem. And, you know, I, I, I hear what Mr. Zach Maxwell said. I, I hear his, he's speaking from the heart. I've talked to many people out here in the community that are hurting, and we're up here dishing out raises, and, and again, we didn't, we could, we could get our employees what they deserve in raises, and just, it's like at my house, maybe I don't need a new car this year. Or, you know, maybe I don't need to put in that swimming pool this year. So I just want to make that comment as the judge calls for this record vote, so you kind of know where I'm headed on this one.
You finished?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're voting on it under new swimming pool or new car. Is there raises that I think our county employees need and everything that we voted on here as a commissioner that has, I think, was necessary for the county? When I first took office, I campaigned that there were a lot of our county employees that couldn't even afford to rent in their homes to the job because they weren't making enough money, and they were on food stamps. Thanks now, I think everybody was close to like $30,000 a year with our benefits, and that's a lot of single parents that had two or three children and could make it, and they're barely making it, and they're not buying any swimming pools or any new cars. I can give you that on accounting salary. But going back to the record vote, how do you...
Well, we're not, I guess I can speak on this too, can't I?
Yes, you sure can.
I mean, you know, it's great to get up and make political speeches, but we vetted this stuff before. All the stuff that Commissioner Eagle talking about, we vetted it here in court, open to all of you, letting you hear us why we're voting on the things that we voted on, and the court approved them. I can sit here and debate with Commissioner Eagle about the positive things that we did and why we did it, but we've already done that. Second thing is, as you'll notice, for the, some of you elected officials that are in the audience, this is the second year in a row, we have not voted for an increase for the elected officials. We did pass it on to the employees, and I've heard a lot about the employees as what makes the county work, and I agree with that. And I feel bad that I voted against the other elected officials not getting a raise for the last two years, when we know inflation has gone up, not even a, a cost of living increase. So, so I beg to disagree with, with Commissioner Eagle, but I respect that he has an opinion. I've got an opinion, but the court has ruled on those things and vetted them, and that's the reason we did them. So that's all I got to say, Judge.
Anybody else, do you have a question, wish to say anything? It's Wilson, Mr. Andrews.
There are still a couple of things in here that I'm struggling with, and one of the, again, it just, everything seems to be getting out of order with me. It's, it's going back to, and these are going to be personnel issues that we're hopefully going to talk about later, different, different responsibilities for different people, but as, as it is, I don't know.
Okay, record vote. How do you?
I got, I got one more. I got, I need to say something, since y'all rebutted me. See, one of the, the best music magicians in the world do their stuff and they divert your attention to the good-looking woman on the stage, or smoke, or what have you, while they're doing their magic trick. I never want, and this is an old divert, diversion tactic to put it on the employees. I never once said about the employees. I talked about a recreational vehicle that they bought in January. I talked about voting equipment we didn't need yet, and I talked about the Tyler versus Net Data software that we vote, that we, the county bought recently. I never said one thing about the employees.
The budget can be the way it is, and then you can set scores the way it should be.
Okay. Can you all with the record vote?
I'm not gonna do it.
Did you vote no, Commissioner Andrews? How did you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Eagle, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner, County Judge Ron Massie votes, yes.
Item number eight is to set the property tax rate at .420345 per $100 valuation. That is less than fiscal 2021-year tax rate for the fiscal year of 2022, and take a record vote on this, sir.
So here's where, this is for the tax rate, we're gonna take a record vote again, what the tax rate of .420345, which is a less tax rate than it was for the fiscal year 2021 tax rate. So again, Commissioner Andrews, first of all, is there any discussion? I think we've already voted on this before at the last...
Yeah, it was a proposed, it's proposed until today.
And now we're voting on it again today. Commissioner Andrews?
Yes, sir. I still want the 417. I vote no.
Can you vote no? Okay, Commissioner Cotton?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Eagle?
I have a discussion point. We did, we did not get a chance to do that, did we, on this one? We proposed it last time, but we're, we're putting it actually up for a vote. The proposal is to allow citizens to comment during the, whatever, two, two-week period since you had it published in the paper, correct, Ms. Kidd? Gives the public a chance to see it.
Yes, sir.
And if they want to comment, they have an opportunity to do that, in an effort to be transparent with the citizens who put... in an effort to be transparent with the citizens who put us in office. Last year, 2020, 2021, we were provided with a no new revenue rate of 42677 by the Hood County Appraisal District. At that rate, the average homeowner would have paid an additional 52 dollars. Doesn't sound like no new, it's, it's not no, it's not a zero-sum game, is it? The taxpayers are paying more money. That, last year was the first year after the SB, was it SB two?
Senate Bill Two.
Uh, that, last year was the first year that we had this new nomenclature called no new revenue rate. And, uh, when I studied the no new revenue concept last year, I did some mathematical interpolation of what, what would the rate be where the average homeowner pays zero more? And, you know, we were in the middle of COVID, and I came up with a rate of .402564, which is about two and a half cents lower than the the no new revenue rate that was given to us by the appraisal district. They, we give them information and they give us, they-
Not on that rate, sir.
Okay, so they just, they just give us the no new revenue ba- rate based on the tax collections that they anticipate and the, and the appraisals. When I put this out there, this rate of .402564, which is pretty close to what the rate the judges, or what was proposed last time, I immediately saw the ringing of hands and gnashing of teeth. And I heard that one say that the county will be crippled in a moment of vexed hyperbole. At the end of the day last year, we voted on a rate that was three-tenths of a cent lower than the no new revenue rate. And I was happy that we got something down out of that. And then that effect on the homeowner was still another 45 dollars based on that rate that we voted in last time. This year, we've been presented with a no new revenue rate of 417339 by the appraisal district. And that's about .64, six-tenths of a cent less than last year's no revenue rate. And that's because the appraisals have gone completely off the charts. People, nobody's making that more, much more money, but they're sitting in a house that keeps going up according to the appraisal district. At their new no, that their no new revenue rate that the, that the appraisal district gave us, that would mean, based on their estimate, that we would have, the average homeowner would pay 70 more dollars. If you add that to last year's 45, just in the last year, two years, that'd be 135 dollars more that the average homeowner has to pay in taxes. And I'm putting all this out there because I want people to see, you know, understand this. Last so we, we voted on a no new, or a proposed tax rate of .4203455, which is three, three-tenths of a cent more than the no new revenue rate. Last year, we went three-tenths of a cent less. And what it's going to mean to the average taxpayer, according to their numbers, is 77 dollars, average taxpayer. And as I did last year, just for grins, I've gone in and calculated a number, tax number, that would have zero effect on the average taxpayer. So my proposed rate would be 3.389400 for this year. And I know that I, I, I know, this is just to put the numbers out there and get it on the record. And that rate would roughly have the homeowners pay zero difference. They're still paying taxes, right? But they're going to not pay more. It is a, it is, going back to my magician's analogy, it's, it's a when we talk about, if we lower the rate a little bit, it doesn't mean a lot. If the appraisal district goes up 30%, you're still paying more, it's coming out of your pocket. In times like we're living in with so many people hurting financially, and again, I, I, I hear Mr. Maxwell, along with inflation starting to rear its ugly head, at least some of the members on this court can consider these facts that I put out here. It's not, it's math, I mean, it's not, uh, I'm not putting hyperb-, I'm not putting hyperbole out here, it's math, pretty, pretty simple. A three-cent tax decrease right now would be about a million and a half decrease in revenue. About, sound about right?
Pretty close.
And that mean, what that, what, what does that mean? Well, it means we'd have to trim a million and a half out of our budget. Not out of employee salaries. There's lots of places we can trim this budget. And if you look at the, if you look at the delta, the difference between last year's total budget and this year's, it's 10% increase. I have an issue with that. And again, I know, I'm just, I know that I'm speaking to the wind right now. I'm one vote. But it doesn't make sense to me, I, I'm sorry, it just doesn't make sense that we're raising our budget by 10% in these times, especially after receiving 9 million dollars already, and I, I, I don't see how we can hold our head up and do that. Anyway, that's, I'll, I'll shut up.
Did you vote? Commissioner? Andrew voted no.
You know, just, just to follow up on as long as your discussion, and we didn't finish, uh, I think Commissioner Andrews agreed to a 417339, didn't you?
Yes.
That's what you thought that it would be. Dave's got one that's a lot lower than that, but Commissioner Andrews says 417339, which would be a 70-dollar increase for every person in the county. So, uh, if we then went to the proposed rate that we're about, about to vote on, which is 420345, it'd be 77 dollars. So, numbers don't lie, liars can do numbers, something like that. So, Benson, hey, look at the numbers. That's a 7-dollar increase. If we went to 42035 over Commissioner Andrews, who's wanting 417339, it's going to cost us all 70 dollars. We could pass that, but if we pass 42035, it costs us 77 dollars. That's only a 7-dollar, 7-dollar increase on an average. The other thing that the court did, Commissioner Eagle pontificated about helping the fire departments out. We wasted money on several things last year for his opinion, and we could have done it for the fire department. Well, guess what? We said in the last court that if we took this 417 rate and jumped it up to 420, it would create 176,000 dollars in revenue, and we voted to commit that to the volunteer fire departments and raise their stipend or their-
Yes, sir, you, you did, and it went from 30,000.
And raise it from 30,000, we doubled it to 60,000 using that increase. So that increase, not Commissioner Eagle's point of lowering it some four, five, or 10 cents, but Commissioner Andrews saying, of course, he's okay with 417339. But if we vote on 420345, that's an additional 7 dollars to support the nine volunteer fire departments with 176,862 dollars, and that money would be dedicated to them and them only, and not to other, as Commissioner Eagle says, frivolous things that the court spends the money on. So, Judge, that's-
May I make a comment?
I'm sure he'll respond to that.
I, I would like for people here who don't really realize how tax, how homes are appraised. Even the appraisal district does not appraise the homes. They are told by the state of Texas, here's what you will do. So it's passed to them, it's passed on to Hood County. We have no control over what they do and how they appraise homes. So the 70 dollars, you gentlemen had nothing to do with it. There was nothing you can do-
They set the tax rate.
Sorry, who's speaking?
They set the tax rate.
Your honor.
But I'm not talking about the tax rate, Zach, I'm talking about the value of homes. They don't set that.
That's the tax.
No, they don't, no, they don't, you, you're- Okay.
You addressed the court.
I'm sorry, you, you do not set the value of homes, do you, sir?
No, we didn't.
All right, that's, that's the point I was getting to, so that, and all the information that we get for the no new revenue rate comes from the appraisal district. None of it comes from me. The only time I give them information is for the second part of Form 50-856, which is the voter approval rate. On that one, the rate is higher, higher than we would ever want to go to. We don't even look at that rate. But that's, again, we do not have any control over that form or the information that is on there. And we've had that conversation, Dave, I just wanted to make it clear that we don't even want to go anywhere near the voter approval rate, ever.
And, and I, see, Ms. Kidd, this is another dodge and divert. We weren't talking about us having any, that we have any control over the appraisals.
No, I just, I just wanted to, everyone to know that you gentlemen don't set the property tax amounts. Because I've had a number of people ask me why you guys raise their value.
No, we, I-
That's why I wanted to make it clear, sir.
I get your point, but that has nothing, that has nothing to do with setting the rate.
Correct. But I wanted to clarify the other-
We have full control of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I thought this would be a good place to remind people that you gentlemen don't set their property tax amount. I'm sorry, their property value.
And, and I just have a, one, one last comment since Commissioner Cotton brought that out there on this extra oh, three-tenths of a cent they're seeking, that all of a sudden, last court, they decided to dedicate it to volunteer fire departments after we've been talking about getting money to volunteer fire departments for the, for the last several months. I find that disingenuous. And I just rattled off to you six cents that we, we could have had available that wouldn't affect the employee salaries, and it would have been money that would have gone, could have gone to the volunteer fire department, not wait till the last day to come up with a proposed rate, and then tack on three-tenths of a cent and say, oh, by the way, we're going to dedicate this little dab of money, this three-tenths of a cent, to the volunteer fire departments.
Okay, I'd like you to say one thing. I don't think that there's any homeowner in all of Hood County that would mind paying the additional 7 dollars.
I would.
The 7 dollars to go where the volunteer fire departments would get an additional 30,000 dollars, so that they would get 60,000 dollars for volunteer fire departments. So with that, I'm going to continue into the record vote to approve the tax rate of .420345.
Need your vote, sir.
Oh, it's Eagle's vote.
I'm going to go no.
Okay, vote no. County judge votes yes.
So I forgot, who voted, who did what?
Evan, no. Cotton, yes. You, no. Myself, yes.
Thank you.
County judge, yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, now, and items, I want to ask you this, because we've got it put up here. Consider, item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to improve the 2022 salary matrix. And then 10, consider and take appropriate action to set salaries as of October 1st, 2022, to remain in effect until September 30th of 2022. Are they connected in any way?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Judge, I think that we probably need to, just my opinion, we'd need to go in an executive session to talk about the salaries with respect to, there's some issues under, we've got to talk about facility maintenance, information technology, ARPA, the ARPA money, and other salaries and related to the clerks, administrative assistants, and officer, office managers, and clerical supervisions and technicians. And really to talk about all those things, we really need to do it in an executive session, so.
I agree with that. And so we say that we're going to take both nine and 10. It considers both of those items in executive session.
Well, actually, Judge, that would, that would cover, that would cover item 27, too.
I agree with that, too.
Okay, so this time right now at 16 minutes till 11, we're going to convene into executive sessions to discuss items nine, 10, and 27. 8:25 AM, and we will come back from executive session, and we are now in Commissioner's court. And we have-
Number nine, to approve the salary matrix.
On the, uh, consider and take appropriate action to improve the 2022 salary matrix. I think we can do that with the exception of one salary.
No, this is, this is a generic form.
Just a generic form, so that we're good with that.
Yes, sir, you can approve it as presented.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the 2022 salary matrix as presented.
Motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the 2022 salary matrix as submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next is consider and take appropriate action to set salaries as of October 1, 2021, to remain in effect until September 30th of 2022.
Would you do this with the exception of Constable Precinct Two? No position will be available?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion in that regard? To approve the salary. On October 1st, 2021, to remain in effect until September 30th of 2022, with the executive of the Secretary for Constable Precinct Two.
Loosened.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to that effect. Do I hear a second? I'll make this, I've seconded the motion. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the set salaries as of October 1st, 2021, to remain in effect until September 30th of 2022, with the executive of the Secretary for Precinct Two Constable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 11.
27, she just asked about 27.
27, we, we won't have to-
Sure.
Do 27.
No.
Consider and take appropriate action to-
Would you just pull, you put it on there?
That's covered in the previous nine. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so number 27 then will come off.
Pulled, okay.
Now, we are back on schedule, and we have here these to discuss appropriate action in letter of intent for purchase six Tahoe's, one pickup, for 2021, 2022. And that's a real problem that we're going to get at.
Yeah, Judge, commissioners found out late last week that when I put this on the agenda, there was, it seemed to be a simple process, asking the court for six Tahos, one pickup, do a letter of intent and move forward, and because it's, everything's in such short supply, I've been told, because of COVID and those computer chips that they have. Well, then I found out late last week, after everything was set, that I can only get two Tahos that are two-wheel drive. So I've got another packet that I put together. They said, well, I can get you four-wheel drive Tahos. And four-wheel drive Tahos have a definite need, have four-wheel drive anything sometimes, it doesn't come up very often, but like this last year with, this last year with the cold and the ice that stayed around forever, we were busting those tire chains that you can put on the two-wheel drive Tahos. So, that kind of threw all this other stuff for the six Tahos out the door, and that was going to be for a total cost on a state contract, 201,302 dollars. And then the truck added on top of that for a grand total of 233,627. So just the Tahos alone, the, the pickup still stays the same at the 32,325 dollars on a state contract. But the Tahos, then I can get two two-wheel drives, and then I can get four four-wheel drives. The difference on the price is 2,000, 2,838 on each unit. So that's a difference of 11,352 increased cost for the four vehicles. So I just wanted to bring this before you and see if we could make that work out or, or not. Be the same kind of thing, if you voted to agree to do that, I'll need the letter of intent. And then they also would like to have a, and it spells out on the, on the top of the contract pricing worksheets, that if a PO is issued, it needs to be issued by the October 30th- 31st, if this all goes the distance, so.
So you need $11,352 more than you needed before?
Correct.
By the deal?
Correct.
Okay.
The caveat is, is the fact down at the bottom, it says no other standard Tahoe's available till 2023.
Yeah, and so that's, I was going to go on with that, that apparently there's, they've got everything in the process for this next year. There won't be anything that's going to come out until 2023 as far as law enforcement addition stuff. So it'll be 2023 before I have a chance to buy anything new, and here it is 2021. So, and I just found out this morning, I had another transmission go out. So the harder we drive, the older ones, the more miles they get, the more maintenance money I need unless we replace them with new vehicles. So I hate to bring this to you, but I guess my office drives about $60,000, or 60,000 miles a month, sometimes even, you know, between 60 and 65,000 miles a month, and patrol in Hood County and, and transports and everything else combined. So it's a lot of miles, but it's what we have to do to serve and protect the citizens of this county and do our job, so.
So are we looking at six Tahos and one crew cab still?
Yes. Yes, please.
And we're looking at $11,352 more?
Yeah, so it'll be, I didn't even write a total on this.
Well, you got the grand total, you say it, $213,004, right?
Well, that's just the Tahos then, plus the $32,325 for the Tahoe, for the pickup. Not the Tahoe, the pickup, the Silverado.
Crew cab?
Yes, crew cab.
Thirty-two what?
Thirty-two thousand, 325 for a crew cab.
What account, Becky?
Capital, $245,000. How much is the total?
Twenty-four, $245,329.
This is Eagles' equipment. All seven Eagles, correct?
Correct. Six Tahos and one pickup.
I think we're going to have to do this because you're not telling when you're going to be able to get any more vehicles. There's going to be such a glut coming up, you just, we, I just feel like the county's just going to have to have that for the, for the transportation.
I, I agree, Judge. I will make a motion to get a letter of intent to purchase six Tahos and one crew cab as presented by the sheriff today for a total of $245,329 out of capital funds. Correct, Becky?
That's correct.
And could we add on to there, if possible, to have a PO ready to go before the end of October?
And to issue a PO before the end of October.
And it's still going to be quite a few months down the road before we get anything, but that gets everything put in writing and set in stone.
Let's get it done.
Capital, this is a rollover fund. It's, it, that's the difference, if they come in before the end, not that's near a physical impossibility, but the funds will be available this year. That's for you.
Your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the next one is, authorized the county judge has signed a Savin's second contract renewal agreement. Again, that's yours, Sheriff.
Yeah, Judge, commissioners, we did this, I'd really, I asked this question earlier today about why they do this in two parts, but we had this on the agenda, I think, two weeks ago. And so this, I believe it says it's second contract renewal, and I believe it's just because of APRIS, the, the contract vendor that the state uses to apply all this and get it back and forth between us and the state. So this is the second part of this contract for Savin's. So Savin's and Vines is one and the same. It's a victim notification system that everybody that's booked in for domestic violence, then their victim gets notified when, when they get out, and then court dates and future things. So it all goes hand in hand with what we passed a couple of weeks ago. So this, this is just the second part of it, that, why they don't send it at the same time, I have no idea. But, so this is a, ask that you approve this and allow the judge to sign.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the Savin's second contract renewal agreement.
Second.
By Commissioner Cotton to allow the county judge to sign a Savin's second contract renewal agreement. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Ms. Kidd, discuss and consider adoption of a resolution directing redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax refunding bond, Series 2017, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Please explain.
Judge, commissioners, we have sufficient funds to pay off a loan. There are two payments left on this loan, but paying it off early will save about $8,000. But it does free up a payment, basically, so that if you gentlemen need to borrow money, we will have a freed up portion of it to utilize in that area.
What was the, what was the payments that we were making? Were they annual, monthly?
Payments are annual.
And what, what were the annual payments?
The annual payment for this one was $455,000 this year and the remainder next year.
So you're doing a pretty good job of budgeting the money.
Well, when we, when I started, we owed over 20 million in debt. We took on the library, we paid it off four years early, and once we pay this off, we'll be under 8 million in bonded debt. So that's no small feat for you gentlemen to have, have approved of.
I appreciate the eagle eye. Okay. So do I hear an appropriate motion?
Becky, Becky, do we have to read these findings in on this resolution, or can we just adopt it?
You can just adopt it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution directing the redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax refunding bond, Series 2017.
Sheriff.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Eagle has made a motion to redeem the county's extended limited refunding bond, Series 2017. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Kidd. Item number 14, discuss and take appropriate action to approve county extensions request to purchase a new Chevrolet SUV not to exceed $30,000 from Fund 55. This vehicle will replace the 2008 Chevrolet Impala that breaks down frequently.
Yes. My goodness. So I have been here for just over six months now, and I think it's broken down four or five times since I've started. It's had two new batteries since February. The AC works on and off. One of the doors doesn't open. One of the windows you cannot roll down because you have to manually pull it back up. Um, what else? The turn signal's out, that, did I say the AC works sometimes? There's just a myriad of issues with that vehicle.
And you do transport students to do your not?
Yes. So a big portion of it is transporting 4H kids to and from all of their events. I had that car loaded down with kids and took them down to College Station, so it's like, I want to make sure that we're getting them there and back safely. They're not my kiddos, they're somebody else's, so.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion for the, to approve the county agent, or extension agents' request to purchase a new Chevy SUV not to exceed 33, or 30,000 from Fund 55.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the environmental health request to purchase a new 2021 Ford.
County extension.
No, I'm sorry, I'm.
You're jumping ahead of us.
What is a vehicle that you're purchasing? You and I talked about it.
Yes, we talked about it. So we're looking at the Chevy Traverse.
First, yes.
Fit seven kiddos in there.
That's what it is, Alan. Forgot ahead of myself. For $30,000, here, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care of the car now.
Oh, I will.
Okay.
Take care of the kiddos.
Number 15, discuss and take appropriate action to approve environmental health request to purchase a new 2021 Ford four-wheel drive pickup not to exceed 30,500 from Fund 55. This will replace the almost new 2008 Ford F-150. Is that right? Is that a fair description of that 2008 Queen Puff?
The 2008 is actually not the oldest vehicle I have, but it has engine issues, power steering issues, and the transmission is slipping in it, so I would like to replace it.
Okay. All right. Well, that's, I think that's a good enough, do I hear an appropriate motion here for environmental health request?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve environmental health request to purchase a new 2021 Ford four-wheel drive pickup not to exceed 30,500 from Fund 55.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve environmental health request to purchase a new 2021 Ford pickup not to exceed 30,500 from Fund 55. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Stacks. Number 16, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign a cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M Agricultural Extension Service and Hood County.
Yeah, this was, this one was on me. This, we've already actually approved that contract. We just didn't put any dates on it. Left a couple of blanks there, so they were asking for a, a five-year contract on that, and I believe we've got the dates on that contract now, so.
You're not going to meet your requirement, retirement qualifications in the next five years, are you?
No.
Okay, good.
You're good.
All right. So what are the dates that you wanted to put on there? Does it begin now?
I believe that it was September 1st of 2021 to August 31st of 2026. That sound?
So you're going to make that motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to sign a cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M Agricultural Extension Service and Hood County from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st of 2026.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, 17, consider and take appropriate action to approve the sheriff and EMC to purchase a dispatch console from Mineshare by CSS to be placed in the dispatch room and the emergency operations center not to exceed $29,195.12 from Fund 83. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner.
No, never.
I think we could put a couple other hats on these two guys right here, Jay Webster and Sheriff Deeds.
So I want to tell Commissioner Eagle, I owe him an apology. I was headed to his office, I saw your truck on the camera at 3:30 yesterday, so I was coming over to talk to you before you left, and I guess we missed each other because I had been able to talk to everybody else, but being on, I got sent to do some other projects last week, so I was coming to see you, so I'm sorry I didn't get to meet with you face to face, and you're hearing about it right now. So my apologies for that, sir.
I love it when that happens. Don't worry.
But I was headed, I'm like, okay, you're on camera, and I get there.
You were trying, right?
Yeah. I get there, and it's like, where'd he go? So what this is, some of the stuff that I've been, conversations I've been having with the sheriff, outside of our radio conversations for the trunking, these are other items that we're discovering that we need to upgrade or have that are outside of that, that conversation to the radio. So this is an additional expenditure outside of that of providing a dispatch center in the EOC, also allowing him to have a backup dispatch center, because right now, if he loses the dispatch capability in the sheriff's office, he does not have a backup to go to. He's just down, and it goes to however we do it old school. So this would allow us to have that dispatch center in the EOC for training and as a backup and when the EOC is activated.
And this is certainly to deal with anything related, that might be related to COVID, correct?
You are correct, sir. I can make it work.
Okay. Just to be good, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to, take appropriate action to approve the sheriff and EMC to purchase a dispatch console from Mineshare by CSS to be placed in the dispatch room in the emergency operations center not to exceed 29,195.12 from Fund, or 12 cents from Fund 83.
Second.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to purchase the dispatch console, as stated in the motion, from Fund 83. Second by Commissioner Cotton for price not to exceed 29,001, what?
Move the tie.
Aye. Well, second by Commissioner Cotton and Commissioner Eagle.
We'll give it to the older, wiser ones.
29,195.12 from Fund 83. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Sheriff, the next one, were you telling me that we're going to pull number 18?
Yeah, I'd like to pull this off the agenda for this time and add it to the agenda on the, the 28th, after putting a pencil to some of the statistics for each one of those cities that are listed. There's been some extra time involved in doing some of those. So we know that we needed to raise the, the prices on a couple of those cities, actually three or four of those cities. So we're going to double check our figuring and make sure it's right, and we need to put this on the 28th agenda.
Okay. Good. So we'll pull number 18. So that brings us to number 19. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a proposed budget item for the Hood County fiscal year 2021, 2022 American Rescue Plan Grants Program in the amount of $339,432.2 to align with state revolving funds to support project identification and feasibility in developing centralized wastewater, water, stormwater, and broadband infrastructure with the city of Creston, Crescent, and with other interested municipalities in Hood County. May go into executive session, real estate contract, and our attorney consultation. So again, at this time, we're going to adjourn at five minutes to high noon into executive session to discuss this item. So.
Judge, I'm not sure we need to. I don't think we need to.
Okay.
Let's, let's just talk about it. So last year, last year, last court, we were presented with the, a proposed budget for American Rescue Act funds, and we, we've noted the number at 5.9 and some change million dollars. And there was the fourth page of that budget submittal that Mr. Webster submitted to us had kind of a one-page spreadsheet, and there were, there was $339,432 unaccounted for. And I just wanted to update everybody that I have actually located another potential location. I've discussed, discussed possibilities with the land, the landowner. I have taken Clint Head, our development person, and we have driven the route. We have, definitely have the, an easement for piping all the way down the route, so there's, there's potential there. I have discussed, we have discussed this with the city of Crescent. These are funds, these are usages of the funds that can be made for infrastructure. And I know that the city is currently proposing a wastewater treatment plant at a location on Old Granberry Road that's being objected to by many in my, my precinct. And right now, it is caught up in some litigation, and it could arguably be caught up in litigation for a long time. And so to me, it behooved us to start looking at potential solutions where we can all work together, county, cities, and look at another solution that would be more indicative or more useful for the entire county and all the cities within the county, at least on the east side in this particular case. So I have also taken an engineer, a water, wastewater engineer with me, and we have gone and driven the route, we've cut elevations, we've gone to the current wastewater treatment plant. We have discussed this with the current wastewater treatment folks at the city of Granberry, who are very, very cordial and very informative. And we have done a lot of footwork on this to at least start the potential ball rolling. So I am proposing that we set aside these funds, and I also understand as well that Commissioner in Precinct 3 is, in fact, we're all having some stormwater issues. So this is a broad, a broad, would be a broad motion to use these funds for, to just look at the potential of doing a cooperative agreement, maybe a interlocal agreement with the city of Crescent, with the city of Granberry. You know, we can figure the details out later if it comes to pass, but. You know, we can figure the details out later if it comes to pass, but there has been a lot of action taken on this by me sitting up here, and I would really like to, I'd like to make a motion that we set aside this 339,432.02 for engineering studies to feasibility studies and for the wastewater treatment potential as well, stormwater and broadband for that matter. It's a very broad category that the federal government gives us, and I'll read straight from, I'll read straight from the Department of Treasury, 31 CFR Part 35, that says recovery, with respect to wastewater infrastructure, recipients may use fiscal recovery funds to construct publicly-owned treatment infrastructure, manage and treat stormwater or subsurface drainage water, facilitate water reuse, and secure publicly-owned treatment works, among other things. And one of the things that I've seen in this law that was passed back in March, the American Recovery Act, is it states in more than one place, and so do the treatises, that this is to be construed liberally to achieve the government, the local government's goals. So I think the funds are appropriate for this reason, for this usage, and I think they're funds that, that we should be using from the American Recovery Act. It's not dipping into our budget. It's not dipping into what we generally use to run the county. And again, I'll open it up for discussion before I make any motion.
First of all, we've talked about this also, and I think that the $339,432.2 is not available in totality with the American Recovery Plan Act. This was a number that was available some, what, six weeks ago or something, Mr. Webster? Can you come down here and, and address that and tell us what it is? I know that wastewater and storm and water, all these are appropriate things that can be used if certain requirements are met. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
But first of all, about the money, is, I can't, I don't want to allocate something if the money is not there. Is the money there?
So when, when I had to go in and do the required report that we all talked about for, at the end of August, prior to the 31st, you actually have to do a lot more work in there than we actually had conversation about. So I actually had to do what we call an expenditure summary and level information inside the portal. And so with that being said, what that means is I had to actually go in to the 66 categories that are listed into that portal and show the cumulative obligations and how much that was for, for each category. And so I had to show the money going somewhere. And so with that being said, when we got done entering the 10 pages of stuff in the portal, it actually came up to a cumulative obligation of 6.2810983. That's actually been shown to be obligated at this time. So when we did the creative spreadsheet, just to try to give you all an idea of what that would look like to expend the money, when I actually had to do it for, into the system as they wanted it, that's how it came out to be over. And what that means is there's some things that I need to go back with Becky and look at changing, because there's some positions that aren't going to be paid out of here. But then when we set the 300,000 aside at that particular moment, it was to make sure that I didn't have anything that wasn't covered. And so some of that funding has been set aside to cover all of the COVID drugs and stuff that we're having to buy for the sheriff's office. The 30,000 that was just approved is going to come out of that 300,000, and then there's some other stuff that me and the sheriff are looking at that are outside. Again, like I said, repeaters and stuff that need to be to fill communication gaps on the law enforcement, fire, and EMS side to utilize that expenditures as well.
So do you have a hard number that, that we can discuss that could be available? Or are the funds already committed elsewhere?
Right now, as the stands in the portal are committed, and like I said, can they be changed? Yes. Do I have a hard number right this second, Judge? No, I do not.
The number you just gave is, you've committed more than you've got.
Correct.
Already.
That's correct.
So what do we, I don't want to change the subject, but.
Part of it has to do with not knowing what direction we're going with the trunking system. And so I set aside 3.5 million dollars to make sure that we were covered with all other conversations and the open meetings we've had with what the sheriff needs for the communications aspect. Now, once that's decided on what that looks like, we'll know what that's going to free up out of that.
Well, I guess where I'm going, we don't get in trouble with the treasury because we've committed to spend more money than they're giving us.
Because of right now, and all of the reading that we've all been doing, we're, even though we only have check number one, we're under the obligation that we're going to get 11, I don't know if you have it numbered, number 11.
Yeah.
11,900.
Right.
And so that's why we're not.
Oh.
Because when I do report number one, which is due in October, then we're going to have to go on and show, make some changes and show exactly where we're going once we start really spending the money.
This all seems to be really very, I haven't been able to get my arms around where, where we're going with this thing with the direction or anything. I know that the, the radio system is a huge, huge portion of that. What are, what are we waiting on there? A final, a final number on that? Is it, are we still doing some engineering? It's, Sheriff, they're all looking at you. You know, it's.
The radio player.
That wasn't working.
Yep. It went, so they turned it on. I probably did.
What we're waiting on is, one of the only questions that we've had all along, we've got the quotes, the prices, I gave them all to you for doing it ourselves for the Granberry regional radio system, and the only thing that we weren't, didn't have yet was the, how much is the city of Granberry going to charge per user on that, that, on their side of the thing. Well, because of the millions of dollars involved in doing it ourselves, I think that'd still be the thing. Well, I've been told it's going to be on their agenda on the 21st, so hopefully they can tell me I can get it on the agenda on the 22nd to be for the 28th, and then we can put the whole plan, that whole Harris plan on this, on the 28th agenda and vote on all of it at once, or two different agenda items, I guess. So that's where we're at. We've been waiting for that, and that vote will be on the 21st for the city of Granberry, and that's the only question we've had all, all along.
That's, you know, I mean, I, I know, I think we've probably all got things that we wanted to sit and discuss and bring to the table and figure this out. Do we need to get a workshop together? And, well, I mean, that's, that's a very important piece. We need to get that one in place before we, before we go beyond that. But I'd, I'd like to ask for a workshop on this so we can sit and, and look at some of these ideas. I do have some stormwater issues over in my precinct that I'd like to, if there's a way to get that addressed or taken care of. And, and I know with the grant works that came in, you know, unfortunately, while I was out, I watched it on, on the internet, but I know there are a lot of ideas floating around out there that I'd like to see what, what funding sources are available, and is this the right pile to look at, or is there a different? And I'd like to have a big workshop on this and see if we can kind of come to a common, common direction on this. And my understanding is that was pretty, just kind of up there, that these numbers could still be tweaked back and forth? Is that not?
Well, we had certain, you had certain time limitations, time constraints that had to be met. Am I right?
Correct. I had to have this report turned in by, before midnight on the 31st, and when I got into the system to do the actual report, they wanted exact figures as to where the money was being obligated. And so I took what was approved on the draft, on the memo that I provided you all, and then the rest of it went into public, public health and public safety, which covers all of your law enforcement, anything that's in that category, public health, public safety. So that's where it's sitting at right now. So to answer your question, do I exactly have a figure? No, I won't have that exact figure until we come to cutting a PO for what we're doing for the sheriff's department, fire, and EMS on that trunking system, and then we'll know what that figure looks like of what's left over. Because I didn't want to cut that short, and then we, we're trying to figure out where the extra money comes from, if it was going to be over $3.5 million. And then the rest of it's been obligated to Mission Granberry, all of our Plexi, those eight, or those entities, nonprofit entities, that can provide the services that the rescue fund was intended for, for all of Hood County. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Andrews called me the other, or texted me the other day asking about the rental insurance for somebody who's asking him for help. That's what that money was set aside for, to give Mission Granberry to help people like that.
So all that was done was no input, at least from this person, no input from the person down on the other end. I don't know of any other commissioner in here that was able, we, we were gonna, we had one workshop. Now, and I still disagree with you on having, on what we, you told us last time when we voted on that, that these are just general, we can change them. Now you're telling us we can't. You told me, you told Matt Mills and you told the judge that we couldn't use this for a new, for a new wastewater treatment, and we can.
No, I said you may use it.
No, you said we couldn't use it. I got your email right here. So what's, what bothers me, sir, is that we've had, I've, at least me, I've been able to have zero input on this CARESAC money. It's been all you. And I don't know that, that the appointed emergency services guy is the right guy to be putting in, deciding where all this money goes. Well, there's many, many places for this money to go. I drafted the resolution according to all the research that I've done that were general parameters that covered it all. I disagree with you that we needed to have that done what you wanted it done by August 31st, and I would like you to bring me the law on that to show me that anything different. And I'm frankly, now I'm being told that not only do we not have the $339,432.2 that your spreadsheet showed us from two weeks ago, we're overdrawn. I, I agree with Commissioner Andrews. We need to have a workshop on this and backup and let the citizens come in and input. This is, we're talking about $12 million here, and we got one guy inputting and deciding where it's going to go.
That's not, that's not correct, Commissioner Eagle. That's not correct at all, and that's a.
Well, three guys in.
The whole commissioner court has been coming in on all of this. And talking about, from what I did when I attended the workshop last, was it Wednesday last week?
Tuesday with Grant Works.
Last week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday of last week, when Grant, when Grant Works were here, and they were talking about using any of this American Rescue Plan money, that you had to have a specific plan already for the money. And let me say this, I'm for having alternate plans. I'm for having, I wish something different had been discussed 10 years ago. I mean, in 2010 is when the wastewater project was first started, is what I have found out in my research, and we still don't have a permit. It's tied up now in administrative hearings. And then whoever loses an administrative hearing, whether it's the city or the citizens, that's going to go to a district court hearing, and that's going to take two years or three years. And then from that, whoever loses theirs is going to appeal to the Court of Appeals. Then you're going to try to get a writ of mandamus to go to the Texas Supreme Court, and maybe it'll be granted. So we're looking at a long, long time before there's any wastewater that may be able to be handled. But I understood from this guy that talked from last about Grant Works, that he said that a wastewater, that you had to have the land and a permit already, and that he would recommend not starting on one.
Yes. So Matt Mills, the county attorney, called that guy, and he said, I never said that, A, and B, that's better to use a new one.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's what I remember him saying, too. Matter of fact, we've got a tape to show the question and answer that maybe clear this issue up whether or not Grant Works thought that this was a viable thing that we could spend the money on. My recollection was a, recommended that we didn't. Drew, could we, could we run the tape, that piece of tape that I asked you to get?
So they set me up again.
They didn't. Did the same thing you do. I just, I'm trying to, trying to, so I don't argue with you, I want to show you the facts.
There's been a lot of activity in Texas. Yeah.
Volume.
That's some pretty extensive, extensive research on this. I haven't been able to connect the dots. I've talked to the folks at the, with the state of Texas, and that, you have to put in for revolving funds in Texas for a wastewater plant, for instance.
Right.
By the, by the 1st of March in order to be considered for their grants next year. So you're out of, you're out of the window right now, but the question is, how can we, how do, I don't, I haven't been able to connect the dots on how we can take this money now and start, for instance, a potential wastewater treatment plant without waiting till March 1st to apply for, apply for it through the revolving funds.
Okay. Well, the trick there is, you're talking about now using potentially two sources of funding to get your project finished.
Correct.
And anytime you combing go funds, you're always going to run into some fun stuff. But if you are, if you're looking to start a project, my, my thought would be phase it, because this money has to be allocated by '24, spent by '26. If you run into any issues with this treatment plant and getting funding from the revolving fund to do it, and you miss timelines, you run into problems with this batch of funding. So if there's any way to phase that into discrete units or smaller projects, that would be my recommendation, to make sure that you can show how this funding was spent and close it out. And then you need less from the state, actual state revolving fund.
So what is it, what do you mean when you say it needs to be allocated by 2024?
It basically means that, let's say you have program design coming up, right? A lot of you probably know what project you want to do, but you don't have engineering on them yet. Well, you can't really allocate your funds until you have a budget. You need to have a concrete budget in front of you. You need to have a contractor that comes in and says, yep, the engineer said it was a $3 million project. Contractor comes in and bids and says, I'll do it for the $3 million. Now you can go back and you can allocate those funds effectively, because you have someone who did that reasonable cost determination, and then you got a contractor saying, yeah, I'll do it. Now you're truly budgeted.
Okay.
And that's the allocation phase. And you're going to show that allocation on one of your reports to treasury, that you have obligated funds. Now, you might, you might go over budget, you might save a little money, but you have it obligated, and that obligation has to be done by '24, or they take the money back. And then as long as you have it obligated, you have an extra two years to actually expend it. And we all know, these sound like a long time, but in an infrastructure environment, that's not always a long time. Things take way longer than you'd expect when you start running these projects. So that's, that's the key here. So a lot of this, where I always recommend commingling funds, no, I think it gets sticky, especially if there's a funding source that's slightly competitive or there's a limited amount, and your project doesn't get funded, and you were counting on that to finish the, to show the treasury that you finished using these funds, it gets sticky. I would, I would recommend avoiding it, if possible.
He made my point. He said, he said to phase it. He said that, I asked him about a new project, and he recommended that we phase it, and that, and I was also acting, asking in conjunction with revolving funds, which is a different set of funds, and he was talking about not commingling those, you know, be careful with that. So I, I think he made my point, so whatever.
I thought I heard he recommended not doing it.
I didn't hear that, not for, not for starting an, not for starting a project, but whatever. Y'all, are y'all going to talk about hiring Grant Works? that, and I was also acting, asking in conjunction with revolving funds, which is a different set of funds, and he was talking about not combingling those, you know, be careful with that. So, I, I think he made my point, so whatever.
I thought I heard he recommended not doing it.
I didn't hear that, not for, not for starting an, not for starting a project, but whatever. Y'all, are y'all going to talk about hiring Grant Works? I hadn't heard anybody talk about that.
Not on the agenda, is it?
I don't think we, well, it's not on the agenda, you know, and I don't mind having a workshop about the money, I think, but Jay Webster is not making the decision on where to spend this American Rescue Plan.
Then who is?
Well, the commissioner's court are.
We voted on it.
All of us, together. And we talked about it in two workshops, and it's been presented two or three times, hasn't it, where we talked about this, Ms. Kidd, about so much for Mission Granberry, and so much for United Way, and different things, and there were time constraints that were set by the American Rescue Plan. What were the dates? It was, the last one was August 31st, correct?
That's correct. I had to do the first update report October. When you go into the October, wherever we are spending the money, I have to show it either in progress, and then there's a rating of the in-progress. And to answer your question as to where it comes from, it comes from this book that me and Becky were given by the Treasury Department on how we have to do and enter the money into the system.
We haven't spent a nickel, though, except today. We allocated money today.
I still have to show it obligated. I gave her a copy of exactly where it was obligated, based on what y'all voted on for me to do.
Vote on it?
Yes. You did vote on it.
Yeah, it was voted by the.
You're not doing this correctly, but you're doing it anyway.
Well, I take issue with that. Would you point out what the requirements are on, under that Treasury regulations, which is what, all the American Rescue Plan money has been issued to everybody? Everybody must conform strictly with these Treasury regulations. They can be interpreted broadly, but you better hit the specific time constraints that are set up in this. But read what, what the requirements are about getting the money. It can be used for wastewater, or for water, or storm, and I agree that there's a bunch of places in Hood County that we could, when it rains a lot, we have a lot of issues. Downtown Granberry's a place for one. I was in the parade and got flooded out. There's a lot of things that we could use the money for, but I know that it has to have a contract, and has to be specific, and have to have the permits. I mean, we don't have the permits for the wastewater deal here off of, here in the city, do we? We do not have the permits yet, and this started, how long ago? What, ended in 2010? I think that's what it was. I, I don't know, I wasn't here then, it wasn't for me, but it's, it's been on, and it, the permits are not going to be issued, that's not going to be a determinative issue, in my opinion, for at least five years. Somebody's going to always appeal. If the city wins, the 18 citizens are going to appeal. If the 18 citizens win, the city's going to appeal. And that's the way it's going to be at all of these other steps. That's what I'm saying. I really would like to have some kind of plan in place that would benefit all of Hood County, not just for this one precinct, not just for some people that are affecting the 18 people. I would like a plan that would benefit all of Hood County. That's what we're up here, all of us commissioners, we're, we got a commissioner for every precinct, and they're trying to do what's best for their precinct. I'm up here, I'm representing all of Hood County, and I want to do what's best for all of Hood County. I think it needs to be something that wish that we could. I, I don't know what it's going to take, it is a very complex, complicated issue. But there are specific points that have to be made, that funds can be used for wastewater, and for water, infrastructure. If what? If, what are these ifs here?
So, in the compliance book, it says all infrastructure projects, you have to have a projected actual construction date, a projected actual initiation operations date. For broadband and other stuff, on the broadband side, you have to have an actual location where you're going to do that. And then if the overall project cost gets over $10 million, there are several labor requirements that are required by the contractor that you're contracted with. It's very long, if you want me to read it, I will. But the gist of it is, they have to provide the number of employees and contractors and subcontractors that'll be working on the project, the number of employees on the project hired directly or hired through a third party, the wages and benefits of code workers on the project by classification, and whether those wages are at rates less than those prevailing. Recipients must maintain sufficient records to substantiate this information upon request. And it goes into some more national labor relations, and it talks about how the recipient will ensure the project has ready access to sufficient supply of appropriate skilled and unskilled labor to ensure high-quality construction through the life of the project, how the recipient will minimize risk of labor disputes and disruptions that would jeopardize timelines and cost effectiveness of the project, how the recipient will provide a safe and healthy workplace that avoids delay and costs associated with workplace illness, injuries, and fatalities, whether workers on the project will receive wages and benefits that will secure an appropriate skilled workforce in the context of the local or regional labor market, and whether the project has completed a project labor agreement, whether the project prioritizes local hires, whether the project has a community benefit agreement with the description of the such agreement. And then for water and sewer projects, you have to have a permit number, applicant, application applicable, and then anything you have to describe, or if any of your projects align with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
So, let me ask you this.
Let me, excuse me, you have to have a permit?
National Pollution Discriminate, Discharge Illumination Systems Permit, if applicable, for projects aligned with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Public Water Systems, PWS slash ID number, if applicable, for projects aligned with the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund.
So, you can't use any of the funds unless you have a permit?
I'm, I'm just going to say the common sense answer is based on what the compliance rules say, yes, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
Becky, when did we receive that first trench? They call it trench, right, of money, or trench, trench, trash? What do they call it? Anyway, I don't remember, when did we receive that?
We received that in July.
So, we received $5.9 million in July, and that's, the first we heard about this, that we, that the commissioner's court was made aware of this, was at the end of July. We had a workshop on it, maybe that, toward the end of July, we had an initial workshop, I think, you know, just kind of talking about, just getting introduced to this. Does it make sense to you that we would have to have all that done by August 31st? There's a gross misreading of that, as far as the August 31st date. I understand all the parameters that they give you, once you get the project going, but basically what you're stating is that nobody could use it for infrastructure, the way you just read that to us, nobody. Because unless they're halfway through it, that's the only way they could do it, and there's nowhere in this, in the law that it says that, nowhere. So, I think, I agree, I understand all the parameters when you get a project going, but I find it very absolutely insane to think that we would have to have a permit and all that done between July 24th and August 31st, before we would be eligible for those, for those funds. I would certainly like some more research on that. And, and I think we do need to have some more workshops. I would like to do that, too. I agree with Commissioner Andrews.
I don't, I'm not opposed to having more workshops on them, the sooner the better. We can do it next week, starting to find out about it. And I don't mind having somebody get a legal opinion, all that, also, Mr. Mills, you know, and bring it up.
He didn't leave yet, either.
No, he didn't. And that, you know, I'd like to have a, I just don't want to, I just wish we'd even had more money. I thought initially we were going to have a hard time spending 12 million dollars, but now I wish it was $112 million. Maybe we could make everybody happy and, and handle a lot of projects. So, I mean, come on up, Mr. Mills.
So, this is just not super deep research, but just exchanging emails and making some phone calls yesterday and last week, but as far as I know, I talked to a guy named Brett Payne, who I think is the vice president of Grant Works, and I don't know if that was the same one at the meeting last week or not.
He was one of them. He was there.
Well, anyway, I spoke to him, I said, "Do we have to be permitted before we start?" He says, "No." Okay? And what I saw in the, the Treasury online links, treasury.gov and all that, I don't see anything that says you have to be permitted. In fact, there's some language in there where you can get started. So, on the one hand, as far as legally, I don't think there's a block. Now, as far as just for a practical matter, which I think is more what the judge is getting at, I, there is this deadline of having the monies expended by end of 2026, so just over five years. And I'm not an expert at all in wastewater permitting stuff, but I know it does take time. So, I mean, if you say, "Okay, we're going to commit to spending all this money for a regional wastewater," and then you get held up with lawsuits, or TCEQs in your face, or whatever, any of the things that can jump up and drag it out, you could be in a lurch years down the road, and now it's like, "Okay, we're screwed with this money." So, those are the two angles, as far as I know and what I've researched.
Well, it sounds to me like we just need to do a lot more footwork on this, because there's, there's a lot of opinion out here, and there's law getting thrown around, there's, there's treatises out there that, best practices, you just talked to a guy on the phone yesterday. There's a lot of things bouncing around, and personally, I think we need to nail down whatever it is that we can do. I don't feel like we've done that as of today, but the more entities that we expend this, put this money out to, the more administrative burden that we put on the county. It seems to me like the prudent thing to do is lessen the number of places that we put in this money. But I think all those are subjects of sitting down and talking about it, and letting, letting the public come in and, and throw in their two cents. Because the bottom line is, this, this money is, was ours to start with. This is taxpayer money that was taken from us by the federal government, and now, well, I don't even know if they got, I think they're just making it up now, but they just turned around and sent it to us, and then they gave us all these parameters, and we're jumping on it like, you know, flies on a june bug, and we need to back up, look, let me ask you this, Jay. Is, now, now that we're here today, I want it on the record, is your contention that all that money, that spreadsheet that we, that you gave us last week, two weeks ago, that we're, that's just done now? It's just, it's expended, and it, we hadn't spent it, but that we can't turn around and do something different? We can't change our minds? We just, we've committed to that? Is that your position?
No, I said it's obligated. It doesn't mean it's in hard stone. We can make changes, but I had to obligate it somewhere in order to meet the August 31st deadline of showing where it went, and they wanted dollar amounts. They didn't want, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to abide by your rules." They wanted to know exact figures and the 66 items as to where that money was going to go. And so, I put it there based on what y'all voted on in court to obligate it, and checking with Becky on a couple of things to make sure that that's where it needed to go, based on what their line item was versus what we've been talking about.
And according, that sheet that you gave us left about $339,000. I was just trying to obligate that for research development and looking into a community, a community countywide, infrastructure for wastewater treatment, and we can't do that now, because you've actually obligated more than we got, right?
Based on what was put in the spreadsheet, that is correct.
I don't guess I have a motion to make, there's nothing left. It's all gone. So, I, in fact, I'll just pull this item off the agenda now.
We'll still have a workshop. I'm, we're getting a workshop next week.
Because there's another $5 million coming. Can I do something with it, too?
Maybe there's something.
He's already got, he's already gotten into that, too.
No, he's not into that. So, we'll just have to have a worksheet, but we just need more workshops. This is the first time for anybody ever getting this type of money here, so I just can tell you, I see this gentleman here, who are you with?
I'm with Gary Artrayler Associates.
Oh, he's next.
Oh, so this is your ballgame here, then? If you're at Traylor, you work with trying to get the.
Not to be confused with Grant Works.
All right, I mean, you're here with the A mud situation here with this.
You got anybody grant through the counter.
But you're shaking.
Here completely separate item, but very abreast of the whole art of the situation.
All right.
The report was required by August 31st. The report had an expended column and an obligated column. It sounds like Mr. Webster put everything in right into the obligated column. However, if there needs to be a change down the road, make a change to that at commissioner's court. Whenever you make moves between budget line items like you do in normal course of business, that would be the way to do that. There's going to be another report here in another quarter that we've got to fill out and submit into the Treasury. It's a good way for them to keep pace with what's going on in the United States.
That next one's October 31st, correct?
Right. The only thing that I showed encumbered or spent was my salary in mortgage, because she went back in time to get that. That's the only thing that's been showed actually expended.
But didn't we, and didn't we give, didn't we use, utilize some of that funds, those funds today? And we did some with the fire marshal last week, too, didn't we? Or did we not?
That saves money for the county.
Now, those are expenditures. Those are checks we wrote, and we bought something with. I, I don't have a problem with that idea.
And so, I showed $158,825 actually expended, based on conversations that I got with her on the salaries and talking to Becky. So, those are actual figures that came from the Treasury and auditing on what we spent last year in actual funds.
So, you know, I guess the moral of the story with what I put on the agenda is, we don't know what, we don't know where we stand on that today. I would like to suggest we have a workshop or two. I still think this is a good idea, and I'd like to pursue this, but I would like to get more input. And obviously, if we've obligated something, but we haven't actually used any of it for that reason, that we can do a line item transfer, just like we did, correct, sir? And at least, at least, I've got that information today, and I'm glad you're here. So, I think we should just schedule a workshop or two back up and, and see if we can, you know, re, revisit all that.
We'll get more specific from the obligated sections. That's what we have to do, and you're shaking your head in agreement. Okay. Okay, good. Well, we'll move on then. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number 20. Review and approve the list of authorized brokers' terms of the investment policy and authorize the county judge to sign a resolution adopting the list, adding of additional PFI broker Texas Fit as an investment pool, the treasurer, Leon McCoy.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon is right. Okay. What do you have?
I wanted to bring another investment pool to our county.
Go ahead.
Do we good?
Oh, I'm sorry. He's got a point of contention.
She said there was a, there was a motion on the table for, made a motion to.
I think he pulled it. You pulled it, didn't you?
Pulled the workshop motion, or?
We don't have to do that, do we?
No, no, we don't. All good is, have one, give them seven to hours notice and have it, whenever it wants to happen.
If I made that motion, I'll withdraw it.
And you pulled your item?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, okay, all right.
Please continue.
Thank you. I have our funds in two investment pools at this time, 14,000, or 14 million in one fund, and through almost 400,000 in another fund. I'm not liking the returns on them, so I have been talking with other treasurers, and actually talked with Ava at the city about this investment pool, Tex Fit, is it Texas Fit? Where'd my paper go?
Yeah.
Yeah, Texas Fit, and we talked about that. Of course, they've been beating down my door trying to get ahold of me, but now I've reached out to them. I'd like to add them in, I believe their rate of return is a lot better than what we have, so I'd like to get more money in.
How much better? What are we talking about? 2.8?
How much bet, how much will we bring in?
Yeah, the return.
Oh, well, the basis points are a little bit higher, not quite much higher, but we would get more than we're getting now. I mean, for 14 million, we're getting 700 and something a month, so I'm not real happy with that. Of course, we know that the investments have been up and down since COVID.
I'm not okay with it either.
Yeah.
I know, and the Treasury's.
But I'd like to spread it a little bit more out and see if we can't get more.
As long as it's, you know, it's one of those certified places that we can invest as a county.
Public Funds Investment Act, yes.
Okay, good. All right. Do I hear a motion in this regard?
I will make a motion to approve the list of authorized brokers' terms of the investment policy and authorize the county judge to sign the resolution adopting the list.
Yes, including that Texas Fit as an investment pool?
Yes.
Okay. I hear a second.
Okay.
Okay, motion in Bayback, Commissioner Eagle, to approve the authorized broker. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the authorized broker terms of investment policy and authorize the county judge to sign it, including the PFIA broker Texas Fit, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and the next one?
It's mine.
Did you, this is for real, this is not a misprint, is it? You got a check for $178,000?
Yes, last, last year, we received $159,861.86, but this year, we have received $178,972.76. It's the same thing as before, it's unclaimed property capital credits to use for the county, so we get that every year, so.
Is that how that built up to 14 million?
I know, so we just need to know which, which GL account you would like to put it in, last year, we did put it in Capital Projects, Fund 55, so it's totally up to you guys where you'd like to allocate the money to.
What have you and Ms. Kidd talked about, that is that the most appropriate place, is Fund 55, Ms. Kidd?
We have discussed that, yes.
The $178,000?
She's not responding.
Yes, all right, do I hear a motion to put the $178,972.76 into Fund 55 that we received from the Texas Comptroller for unclaimed property?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Wilson, to deposit the $178,972.76 from unclaimed property into Fund 55. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This, accident, number two, Mr. Jay Riley, discuss to take appropriate action for additional funding to repair or replace a failing heating, venting, and air conditioning units in county buildings, county buildings.
Yes, morning, Judge, Commissioners, this is the same thing I came back to on three previous occasions, I believe I included a spreadsheet with where the money has went. We funded $75,000 at each time, this is to replace failing units, and they've had to fail before we replace them. There's two on the very bottom of the sheet that, these were split units that I put in the, on your list, it says Bat Cave, but it's actually Drug Enforcement Building, I paid for them out of my budget, so they're not part of this, but I did, just to be transparent on the, the whole deal, we got hit pretty hard last week with two units, I actually went over by about $444, so I spent a little over the last bundle of money I had, I spent $444 over the $75,000 that you gave me on April 13th of 2021. So, and what we do with this money, as you know, we just ear-tag it for new units to be replaced as needed. At this particular point in time, there's none that need to be replaced, but we do this to kind of keep everything going, and it's getting harder to get this stuff, things went up a little bit this year on them, you can kind of go by looking at the dollar figures, they're, they're a little higher now than they were, and they're about three to six weeks out on any unit that I order.
Yeah, Judge, we've done this in the past, and Jay came and talked to me about it, I don't know if you talked to the rest of them, but what we do is, I think we take this out of Fund 55 and put it in his budget, so that he didn't have to come to court.
We allocate money out of capital.
Out of capital.
These are fixed assets for the most part, so.
So that way, he didn't have to come to us every time he has an air conditioning failure, he's got $75,000 I've had, you spent that, you're going to have to repair some more, so even though your agenda doesn't say that, I think what he's looking for is to allocate those $75,000 to, into that account, so when you have failures, you can replace them, isn't that right?
Right, and we chose to go down this road instead of spending 2.1 million, so we saved a lot of money by going this direction.
I think $75,000 at that time is better than 2. something million, okay? I hear, do I hear a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion to appropriate additional funding to repair and replace failing HVAC units in Hood County in the amount of $75,000.
Second, by Commissioner Cotton, to place additional $75,000 in, in Fund 55 for to capital, is that what it is, for Jay Riley's use in maintaining the heating, and venting, and air conditioning units, one thing, you do a good job, Jay, and that was second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All disapprove, motion carries 5-0, thank you.
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
Okay, next item, number 23. Item 23, discuss to take appropriate action to update the contract with Brown County to increase the cost from $45 to $50 per inmate per day, Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners' Court, we were put on notice, we haven't had that contract very long, don't know what happened, we haven't had that contract very long, but we were put on notice that on October 1st, they're going to be going from $45 up to $50 per inmate per day, so they sent us a letter saying that and the new contract, so I'd ask that you approve it so we can keep housing some prisoners out there. We've looked for other jails that are about that $45 range, and we haven't been getting them to return calls, they don't have room, or they don't want to do it, or not really sure.
How much does it cost us a day just to keep inmates here?
$47.60 per day here.
So at 45, we were getting a better deal, huh?
Yeah, but it's going up to 50 there.
The transport.
The way it figures out is the, you take the annual budget for the jail and divide it by how many beds in the jail, 192, and 365 days a year, and you come out with that $47.60, so we had even talked to Johnson County to see what they would do, and they've got 1,050 beds and a whole lot bigger budget, because they went to, like, paying their people 21 bucks an hour, but they haven't got back to us, they don't have to go that if they don't want to, but we haven't got anybody else to return the calls or put in writing what they would do for us. So we've got them in Somerville County, that's $45 a person per day, Erath County, and then now this one will be going up to 50, October 1st, so I'd ask that you approve that so we can keep moving forward.
Well, there is what it is, so I think I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'll make it, to update the contract with Brown County to increase the cost from 45 to $50 per inmate per day.
Second, by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the Brown County contract to increase the cost from 45 to $50 per inmate per day, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, 20, item number 24, discuss and take action to adopt or reaffirm the Civil Rights Resolution, CP Plan Section 3 Policy, Excessive Force Policy, 504 Policy and Grievance Procedures, Code of Conduct Policy, LEP Plan and Fair Housing Policy as required by TXCDBG Number 7220191, and approve Civil Rights/Fair Housing Ads for publication. We got Trailer and Jeannie Stacks here, make it short and sweet, please.
Judge, Commissioners, I'm just going to introduce Mr. Wesley Trailer from Trailer and Associates, and Lynn, y'all can ask.
Okay, what do we?
Thank you, Jeannie, Judge, Commissioners, staff, and citizens, thanks for the lovely morning here to go over county business. Number 24, I'll make it short and sweet, this is a grant that the county received after submitting an application back in 2019, so federal government, slow-moving for some things, fast-moving for others, mostly slow-moving, but this is some standard grant startup documentation that we have to do to continue forward with the grant. Here with me today is Mr. English with AMUD, that is where the grant will actually take place, that is for providing first-time sewer service to citizens in Hood County that reside in the Port Ridgely East area. The grant is for $500,000, the local match is being paid for by the Acton Municipal Utility District solely, no county funds in this grant, the county was just the conduit for asking for that grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture.
You're in agreement with that, Mr. Fisher? You could use the $500,000?
Oh, I, I think we'll, we'll be able to use it.
Okay, and it's not cost the county any money at all, it was just a flow-through on the thing, and last year, didn't we approve one for another $300,000 that you got?
Last grant was, I believe it was.
Come up to the, come up to the mic, Richard.
The last one was $300,000, wasn't it?
It was either 300 or 350, I'm not real sure what the ceiling was.
Yeah. I believe the last one was $350,000.
Okay.
All I can say is you got your wastewater money a lot quicker than I did. Were you up here two minutes?
There you go. No, it took him, it's taken you, what, two years?
We haven't approved it yet.
Yeah, okay, well, I think I entertain a motion for what I've dictated here, for AMUD to receive through the county of $500,000 that Trailer was able to get through a grant from all these different plants here, is that correct?
Well, I'll make the motion to, because we've got to do two of them, this one here is to approve all of those contracts for fair housing and all that stuff, that the government requires you to do to get a grant, I suppose.
He who writes the checks makes the rules, so, federal government's asked us to pass all these resolutions and, and policies regarding fair housing and civil rights.
And so I'll make that motion to approve those.
Second, okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton, to approve all the rules and regulation and policies, second by Commissioner Wilson, so that we could get the grant money. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0 to approve the policies. Now, when we talk about the real money here, I hear another motion.
I'll make another motion to authorize the signatures for the contractual and financial documents pertaining to the TXCB, CDBG grant number 7220191.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton, to actually receive the grant number for $500,000, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate all the hard work that you did for this, I know that you took it, it was kind of shaky at the beginning, but you did a good job, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jennifer Logsdon.
Yes, I'm going to take those out at any time.
Now, we're saving the, the last for best, though, I want you to know that, okay? Thank you.
You didn't change them, did you?
Okay.
Okay. So you just, all you're asking is that the library get a holiday schedule that coincides with the counties?
Correct.
And that you want a few days so that you could make an, an inventory and for training, is that correct?
Yes.
Who could argue with you? You're doing such a great job.
Some people do.
Hey, I mean, everybody in the county tells me, and I know they tell the other Commissioners too, what a fabulous job that you're doing with the library, and I really do mean that, you really are doing a fabulous job, I mean, everybody says that, so.
Thank you.
Do I hear an appropriate motion, Mr. Cotton?
I'll make the motion, let's see, to, regarding the requested closure dates for the library that coincide with county holiday schedules and closure dates for annual inventory and training per the attached list.
Second, a motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the holiday schedule so it coincides with the county, and to approve the additional days for closure for inventory and for training, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, at five minutes till 1:00 PM in the afternoon, this meeting is adjourned.